Okay.
Lead the pledge, you're very good. It's on me, Shart. Welcome, everybody. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being with us tonight. We're going to go ahead and come back to order with a roll call from our city clerk, Kathy Valdez.
The record show of length that all members are present.
Our city attorney, Walter Chung, will bring us out of closed session.
On closed session item number one, the city council took no discloseable action, reportable action. On closed session item number two, the city council has authorized me to disclose that in closed session, the city council agreed not to pursue the acquisition of 2630 Business Park Drive for any purposes.
Okay, next it'll bring us to the pledge of allegiance, and we're very honored to have with us tonight, Boy Scout Troop 709, who is going to lead us, along with leaders Carter Conley, Patrick Conley, and Tommy Shart, representing Troop 709. Come on up and going to lead us into pledge of allegiance this evening.
Scouts salute those non-uniformed, please place your right hand over your heart. Please show me the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To, maybe seated.
Thank you very much, Scouts. We want to convene our meeting this evening in honor of the memory of Major Tyler Bracone, who tragically lost his life in a helicopter crash in Imperial County during a routine training operation. Major Bracone was an AH-1Z Viper pilot assigned to Marine Light Attack Helicopter Squadron 369, or HMLA 369, based at Camp Pendleton, known as the Gunfighters. HMLA 369 is the City of Vista's adopted Marine unit. Major Bracone will be remembered as a brave aviator and a leader who served our nation with humility, strength, and purpose, and we join the United States Marine Corps community and the Bracone family in mourning this profound loss. Let's have a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, our city clerk, Kathy Valdez, will read some procedural statements.
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buena Sanitation District ordinance 2006-1. I would like to remind everyone that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting and to conduct themselves in a courteous manner. The ordinance is adopted to allow for public input and facilitate city business without disruption in the meeting. Applause is appropriate for items listed in the presentation portion of the agenda only. Students wishing to receive credit for attending this evening's meeting must stay for a minimum of one hour. However, we ask that you stay for the completion of an item rather than leaving in the middle of a discussion. When you're ready to leave, you may ask one of the staff members at the back of the room to sign your paper. Thank you.
To speak on an item on tonight's agenda, please fill out a speaker slip with the number of the item you'd like to speak on and give it to the clerk's secretary's staff here at the dais. Speaker slips are available on the table just outside of the city council chambers. For members of the public participating via Zoom, you may use the raise your hand feature to indicate that you'd like to speak, or press star nine on your phone. We will announce when to raise your hand to indicate that you'd like to make a comment on the specific item being discussed. Speakers will each have three minutes to address the council. Now, we'll go to our city manager, John Conley, for approval of tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Reminder that we removed item D4 Navigation Center location in the Vista Business Park from the agenda, otherwise there are no changes.
Very good. We have four presentations this evening, and I'd like to invite my fellow council members to join me at the lectern for these. Okay, our first presentation tonight is one to present letters of appreciation to Girl Scout Troop 1180. Would you please come forward? Okay, our letter of appreciation reads, "On behalf of the City of Vista, the mayor and the members of the Vista City Council are honored to extend their heartfelt congratulations and recognition to each of you for the successful completion of your Bronze Award service projects. The Bronze Award represents the highest honor a Girl Scout Junior can earn, and it reflects your commitment to leadership, community involvement, and making a meaningful difference in the world around you. Your troop's creative, compassionate, and impactful projects have touched many lives and exemplify the values of the Girl Scout mission. We'd like to commend you for the following project, the following project teams for their outstanding work. Adeline Dolan, Brylee Burton Arner, Taylor Turpin, Abby Torres, and Sterling Fresca for designing a thoughtful care cabinet and organizing a successful collection drive of hygiene and puberty products to support the youth at the Boys and Girls Club of Vista. Nora Vaughn, Callie Newbauer, and Reagan Talbot for creating an educational brochure to inspire support for homeless outreach organizations, and collecting over 300 pairs of new men's socks for interfaith community services through your own community sock drive. Maddie Torres, Emma Conley, and Kennedy Stott for assembling a welcome home starter pack, or welcome home starter packs for a local dog rescue, complete with resource guides, pet essentials, and handmade dog bandanas to help new pet owners start their journey with care and confidence. Charlotte King, Charlotte Cleghorn, Olivia Anna Biles, and Nora Gunning for hosting and empowering All-Star Daisy Day, giving younger girls the hope to try new sports, build confidence, and develop a strong sense of self-esteem. Each of you has shown what it means to lead with purpose, to serve with heart, and to make a difference in your community. Your efforts have made a long-lasting impact, and your continued dedication as you pursue the Gold Award inspires all of us. As mayor and on behalf of the members of the Vista City Council, we want to thank you for exemplifying the very best of Girl scouting in Vista, and we look forward to seeing all of you achieve on your journey towards the Gold Award. With our gratitude and admiration, October 28, 2025." All right, congratulations. All right, our next proclamation is one declaring October 29, 2025, as Patrick Conley Day in the City of Vista. Patrick, would you please come forward? All right, our proclamation for Patrick, whereas Patrick Duncan Conley has been awarded the highest rank in Boy scouting, the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout, an achievement representing many years of hard work, dedication, and steadfast commitment to the longstanding principles and values of scouting. Whereas Patrick has been active in scouting for over 10 years, beginning with Cub Scouts and later joining his father's former troop, Boy Scout Troop 709, he has supported and contributed to numerous community service projects, held various leadership roles within the troop, earned 26 merit badges, qualifying him for the Eagle Scout Bronze Palm. And whereas for his Eagle Scout service project, Patrick raised funds and secured materials to lead the construction of three garden beds for the Veterans of America, which were installed at a local senior center in Oceanside. This project provides an enduring benefit to both youth and adults who visit the campus daily. And whereas Patrick has applied the skills learned through scouting to serve both his community and go beyond the troop, excelling in leadership roles both on and off the athletic field, including in competitive and high school sports, he earned the varsity letter in track and field as a freshman at Rancho Buena Vista High School, demonstrating his strength, discipline, and good character. And whereas the Vista City Council extends its sincere appreciation and admiration to Patrick for setting an inspiring example for youth through his achievements, leadership, and service, his accomplishments reflect the very best of scouting and personal dedication. Now, therefore, as mayor and on behalf of the members of the Vista City Council, I do hereby proclaim and commend Patrick Dunley, Patrick Duncan Conley for upholding and advancing the proud tradition of scouting, for living by the scout oath and law, and do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 29, 2025, as Patrick Conley Day in the City of Vista.
Come on down, Mom and Dad.
We wager you must have done something right to make this happen.
All right, now I'd like, our next proclamation is one to commend some of our local heroes. And I'd like to invite the following individuals to come forward, starting with Battalion Chief Brendan Howley, Captain Justin Golden, Firefighter Paramedics Joseph Gutierrez, and Brett Osmus. And Firefighter Paramedics Delaney and Wong Welch are unable to join us tonight. Our proclamation reads, whereas on June 28, 2025, emergency crews from Vista Fire Rescue responded to a dramatic rescue operation after a person fell 24 feet into a concrete culvert, where they landed in six inches of water and were seriously injured. Whereas Captain Golden led the rescue team, working alongside firefighter, paramedic Delaney, Gutierrez, Osmus, and Wong Welch, the crew quickly cut through the fence to gain access and deployed a ladder to reach the injured person in the culvert. Recognizing the complexity of the situation, they utilized their truck's ladder as an elevated anchor point for the technical rescue operation. Whereas Battalion Chief Howley arrived on the scene to oversee the high-angle rescue procedures, the team carefully secured the patient to a backboard, placed them in a Stokes basket, and successfully lifted them out of the culvert using rope rescue techniques. Due to the severity of the fall, the patient was transported as a trauma case via Mercy Air V helicopter to Sharp Hospital. Whereas the coordinated response from units T-126, RA-126, and B-121 demonstrated exceptional teamwork and technical skill in what could have been a fatal situation, successfully extracting the victim from a dangerous location 24 feet below ground level. Now, therefore, as mayor and on behalf of the members of the Vista City Council, I do hereby commend and proclaim Battalion Chief Brendan Howley, Captain Justin Golden, and Firefighter Paramedics Austin Delaney, Joseph Gutierrez, Brett Osmus, and Ian Wong Welch as heroes for their courage and commitment to serving others. Through selfless service and meaningful contributions, they demonstrate the true spirit of honor and preserve perseverance and integrity. All right. We are proud indeed to celebrate and honor our heroes. Our final proclamation is one declaring October 2025 as Fire Prevention Month in the City of Vista. And with us tonight is our Fire Marshal, Mark Viero, and his team, who will be accepting the proclamation. Come on down. Whereas the City of Vista is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in the City of Vista and visiting, and whereas fire remains a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium-ion batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risks. Whereas the most, most of these electronics used in homes daily, including toys, smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys are powered by lithium-ion batteries, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged, can overheat and start a fire or explode. Whereas the National Fire Protection Association reports an increase in battery-related fires, underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium-ion batteries. Whereas residents should follow three key calls to action: Buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. Whereas lithium-ion batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space, and improper use, such as overcharging, using off-brand chargers without safety certification, or exposing batteries to damage, can result in fire or explosion. Whereas the proper disposal and recycling of lithium-ion batteries helps to prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risks in the home and community. And whereas Vista Fire Rescue is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety education, and community outreach. Whereas October is recognized as Fire Prevention Month with four Vista Station, four Vista Fire Station open houses scheduled every Saturday in the month of October. My nephew loved it, by the way, this last weekend, had a great time. And one of the first Saturdays, and on the first Saturday of November, to engage the community in a fire, in fire safety education. Now, therefore, as mayor and on behalf of the members of the Vista City Council, we do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Fire Prevention Month. And be it further proclaimed that, on behalf of the mayor and the members of the council, we urge all persons to heed the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Month and to support the public safety activities and efforts of Vista's Fire Rescue Department.
Do we get one more with all our firefighters? Come on, Dad, come on.
Well, to the council, we didn't get a picture with our Boy Scouts. We did not get a picture. Should we, should we do that really quick?
All right. Boy Scouts, can we get a picture with you? We got one with the Girl Scouts, let me get one with the Boy Scouts. Can we take a picture with you? All right, that's going to bring us to our oral communications opportunity. Any member of the public may address the City Council on agency-related matters not on the agenda by requesting to speak during this section of the agenda. If you are participating via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature now and press *9 if you'd like to speak. The number of speakers that will be heard during this segment is limited to 10. Any remaining speakers will be heard under the second oral communications item. All right, we have two speakers on Zoom, seeing none here in the chambers. We'll start with Becky Rapp, followed by Peggy Walker on Zoom. Becky Rapp.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Becky Rapp, and tonight I wanted to share with you a new peer-reviewed study published this month in the Journal of Addictive Behaviors, which should serve as a wake-up call. Researchers from the State University of New York and the University of Kentucky analyzed national health data and found that for the first time, more Americans now use marijuana than smoke cigarettes. From 2021 to 2023, marijuana-only use rose significantly from 7% to more than 10% of adults, while cigarette smoking declined. The researchers cautioned, and I quote, "Without timely policy response, marijuana may become the next public health crisis." We here in our city have spent decades reducing tobacco use through smoke-free housing policies, youth prevention programs, and advertising restrictions. But now, we're watching history repeat itself. Marijuana is becoming more and more normalized and marketed with the same playbook used by big tobacco through flavored products, colorful packaging, and advertising, making false promises of health and wellness. Today's marijuana is not the same as it once was. These are high potency products, often 80% to 90% THC, that science links to psychosis, depression, addiction, and impaired brain development, especially among young people. If we don't act now, the progress that Vista has made in tobacco prevention could be erased by a new wave of marijuana-related harm. The study, the study's authors urge a multi-pronged public health response: education, early detection, and treatment. Those efforts must begin locally through strong policy enforcement and prevention messaging that reaches our youth and our families. Thank you.
All right, now we'll hear from Peggy Walker, followed by Madison Rapp.
Good evening and thank you. My personal awareness of five young college men who died of marijuana-related suicide and the staggering pain to their families brought me here to call attention to October as Youth Substance Use Prevention Month. This observance reminds us that substance abuse is the number-two risk factor for suicide, with data showing a significant association between marijuana use and adolescent suicidality. Given that almost all marijuana is high potency, it gives pause to consider policy controls for youth and for public safety. The state auditor has just addressed this, making recommendations to the legislature to reduce the risk of marijuana appeal to young people. These recommendations apply to local jurisdictions as well and include requiring licenses to use pre-approved plain packaging, establishing THC caps, ensuring clarification of how many servings are in a container or package, and reinforcing bans on imaging and advertising and colors and flavors that are attractive to use. I urge this council to review and implement the reasonable state auditor recommendations to ensure youth and public safety in this city. No parent should have to read the words left by one victim. You were right, Mom. I couldn't handle the marijuana. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Now we'll hear from Madison Rapp.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Council members. I'm here to ask the city to prioritize public education about the risks of cannabis use during pregnancy. Recent data show a steady rise in marijuana use among pregnant women. Many turn to cannabis for anxiety, nausea, or sleep, often because they fear prescription drugs, can't afford care, or believe cannabis is safer. But science tells a different story. THC crosses the placenta and can affect fetal brain development, especially with today's high potency products. Cannabis use during pregnancy has been linked to preterm birth, low birth weight, and later problems with attention, behavior, and emotional regulation in children. The problem is that many women don't know this. As a mother of three young children myself, I know the difficulties of navigating pregnancies and trying to sort through health information during a time when your body changes so much. Mothers face conflicting messages from doctors, dispensaries, online forums, and peers. Some dispensaries even recommend cannabis to pregnant women despite the known risks. And many healthcare providers don't feel equipped or supported to discuss the issue clearly. Every mother deserves support, but the unborn child cannot speak for themselves. We have a responsibility to protect them through education, compassion, and truth. Thank you for your time and your commitment to public health.
Okay, now we'll close the opportunity for public comment at this meeting. We'll now move us to our consent calendar. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by submitting a Request to Speak card to the Clerk-Secretary, by using the Raise Their Hand feature on Zoom, or by pressing *9 on their phone. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. We have five consent items this evening. Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to...
Councilmember O'Donnell.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion as second. Please cast your votes. The consent calendar is adopted unanimously. That'll bring us to the first public hearing tonight, a nuisance abatement hearing regarding 1820 East Vista Way. The public hearing is now open. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the Raise Their Hand feature, by pressing *9, or submitting a Request to Speak card here at the dais. Speakers will be called upon after the presentation. Our Assistant to the City Manager Joshua Sino Cruz will introduce the item.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm here with Clarence Rich, Code Enforcement Manager, and tonight's presentation will be on the nuisance abatement hearing for 1820 East Vista Way. Here is a map showing the property at 1820 East Vista Way, outlined in red. The assessor's parcel number is 1792320900. This property is located on the northwest corner of East Vista Way and East Taylor Street, is a little over half an acre, and shares its borders with two other residential lots.
Just for the public record, that was 1712320900.
Yes. This past June 11th, Code Enforcement responded to a complaint about loud nighttime noise and junk accumulation. Staff observed unpermitted auto repair activity and debris throughout the site. A notice of violation was issued, directing the owner to stop the unpermitted business use under the Property's Zoning Development Code, Section 18.30.10, and to remove the accumulated junk and debris per our Muni Code, Section 8.36.040. Later on July 31st, fire staff identified hazardous vegetation on the property. A notice to abate nuisance was issued under California Fire Code, Section 304.1.2, which requires the removal of vegetation capable of being ignited and endangering property. They were also cited for defensible space requirements per our Muni Code 8.62.030, where grass and weeds needed to be cleared or trimmed to a height not exceeding four inches, and for the mature trees to be limbed up to create a minimum clearance of six feet between the ground and lowest branches. On August 19th, the Sheriff's Department conducted a raid at the property in connection with criminal activity. City staff from Code Enforcement and Building were present on-site to conduct a joint inspection. Building violations were immediately apparent, and the structure was deemed unsafe for habitation and occupancy under Muni Code 16.12.010. Staff observed electrical tampering, exposed wiring, illegal meter bypassing, along with unpermitted room additions, failing load-bearing walls, improper plumbing, and exterior damage. There was also evidence of unpermitted cargo containers in violation of Development Code 18.58.580 and illegal residential use of containers, sheds, and vehicles in violation of Development Code 18.34.010. Notices of violation and administrative citations were mailed to the property owner on record. During the joint inspection in August, the property was red-tagged, notifying the owner and occupants that the structure was unsafe and not to enter. On October 9th, the property was posted, and a notice was mailed to the owners regarding tonight's public hearing. Staff recommends that council open-conduct and close this public hearing, adopt a resolution declaring 1820 East Vista Way a public nuisance, and authorizing the City Manager to abate the nuisance. This concludes staff's presentation, and we're available to answer any questions. Thank you.
We have Glenn Shurick. It's requested to be heard on this item. Please, yes, come forward. Just pull that microphone towards you and bring it as close to your mouth as you can, so we can hear you.
I'd like to speak on this property. I'm currently a tenant there, and...
You're a tenant there now, you said?
Yes. So we've...
Get that microphone just as close to your mouth as you can.
There we go.
There's a little button on the, if you need it, it'll bring it up.
Yeah, that's good. We've, pretty much, all of the issues that were at hand, we've taken care of. We've hired an electrician to come in. He's fixed the electrical box and all of the electrical issues. We've hired contractors to come in and cut all the trees back. As far as the people living in the vehicles, everybody has been pretty much evicted. Everybody's moved out, except for the people that live in the house. Myself and my two roommates. We've spent thousands of dollars cleaning this property up with no help from the landlord, the people that own the property. As you can see, they're not here tonight. Like I said, we've spent a lot of money trying to clean this place up. I mean, I've called and talked to the Vista City planning people to have them come out and inspect everything that's been done. They were supposed to be out today at 1:00, and nobody showed up. So...
Who was supposed to be out at 1:30 today?
Yeah, at 1:00 pertaining to the last...
Somebody from the city of Vista, or the landlord you're referring to?
Well, the city.
Somebody from the city was supposed to be there at 1:30.
Today, and they never showed up.
Got it.
So... I've got all the documentation from the electrician and the people that we've hired to come in and clean this place up. We've taken over 12 trills full of trash and junk out of the property. Like I said, we cut back all the trees. All of the issues at hand, we've pretty much taken care of it. So, I don't know how we have somebody come out and inspect it, or what we do from here. That's what I'm asking.
We will definitely get into that.
Okay.
So why don't you, if you don't mind, have a seat right there in that front row, and if we need you, we'll call on you?
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
When is the last time that somebody from the city of Vista was out there to revisit the property?
So we posted on... So the last post, we posted on the property on October 9th, so... So, that's when Clarence and I were out there last, and we didn't see any type of abatement that was done during that time. I know that a code officer was in the area vicinity today, and they noticed that there's a lot of activity going on over there, a lot of noise, but wasn't able to confirm the type of work that was being done out there. But it was- they thought it was related to the previous auto repair activity from before.
You want to give us a summary of what the staff recommendation would do?
So, to abate the property, I know one of the remedies would be to have a licensed engineer evaluate whether the structure could be repaired or if it requires demolition. I know all the debris and trash needed to be cleared out. The tree and the vegetation need to be trimmed up per Fire Code violations, and basically, that's the major issues on that property.
And if the council votes to proceed with the abatement, and the next inspection determines that all of the conditions have already been cured, then what costs would the owner of the property incur?
I believe if we just go in there and inspect and everything's been taken care of, all they would be responsible is for the citations associated with the property. But if the nuisance is abated, then they should be okay.
What are the amount of the citations now?
I believe there was about $1,200 worth of citations right now.
And when did we first provide notice of violation of these code violations?
Back in July.
July of 2025. And how many times did we correspond or communicate with, that we documented with the- and have we been communicating with the owner? Do we know that?
So, I know it's been mostly letters and notifications either on the property or through mail. We were unable to retrieve any phone numbers or contacts, like email contacts. So, that's primarily been our correspondence.
We sent U.S. mail to the registered address of the owner as registered with the County of San Diego?
Yes.
Very good. Okay. Well, so where we're at is- and how many total contacts did we have since July?
I know there's been at least six, six different contacts, and it's been through code, through building, and also fire.
Okay. So, it sounds like there are some very serious structural issues that yet still have to be inspected for to make sure that the structure is actually safe. Are the tenants of the building, are we by force of law, they're not allowed to reenter right now?
Yeah, according to the building inspection, there shouldn't be anybody in there.
Okay. And what kind of penalties would accrue to a person who unlawfully inhabits the structure at this time? It'd be a violation of our municipal code misdemeanor? Okay. I just want to get the full story out here, but I want to- you know, I place a lot of faith in our Code Enforcement Department, in our Planning Department, and I would, you know, six different opportunities that took place over the last four or five months. It sounds like we still have some very serious issues in addition to some easy things to cure. So, my inclination would be, particularly given that the owner of the property is not here to speak, and ultimately, the cost of remediation would basically be placed on the tax roll. It would be the burden of the owner of the property. And Mr. Shurick's here, speaking on behalf as a tenant. You're not- you don't have any interest in the property. You're not the owner. You're not the owner of the property. So, so these costs are not accruing to you. In reality, they're actually making the building safer for you to live in, and we're concerned that, you know, something could- something negative could happen to injure your health or safety or the other tenants in the building. So, with that, I think the right thing for us to do is to move forward with continuing to try and remediate and make the property habitable and safe, and also make it a good neighbor. So, I'll go ahead and make a motion for staff recommendation. Councilmember O'Donnell.
Did we have someone that was scheduled to go out today, and they just missed the appointment?
I'm not aware of any inspections or scheduled inspections that were to take place. I've been in contact with our fire staff, Code Enforcement, and also our building inspector, and I wasn't aware of any scheduled work or inspection.
Have you received any paperwork notating or showing the work that this gentleman's saying that has been done to the property?
We have not.
Okay. So, in three months, has the owner in any way made an attempt to either pay the fines or remediate or fix the issues taking place in the property?
There's been pretty much no contact.
At all?
Yeah.
Is there any reason we haven't been there in 19 days, knowing that this hearing was coming up?
Well, I know just from other staff, based off what happened with the Sheriff's Department, I know there's been people on-site, and so, kind of like a safety issue. I mean, they can observe it from afar, but not really go really near the property.
Okay. Yeah, I'm in agreeance with the mayor. My biggest issue right now is, in June, the issue came forward, and then July 3rd, July 31st, August 19th, August 20th, and again on October 9th, communications were made to the property and the property owner, and nothing had been corrected. So, we're going to do another inspection before- so I'll second the motion and move it forward then. Appreciate your work on this. I mean, if the owner can prove or you all can show that the work's been done, and it is a safe living condition, that's not up to me to decide. That's going to be up to our staff and our inspectors to decide. I think it's a different conversation, but given the information we have before us, I have to support staff recommendation on it.
And at this time, we're going to hear from Mr. Scott Burns, who's requested to speak on this item. Mr. Burns, you'll have three minutes.
Everything that he is saying is true. In fact, that there's been a great deal of addressed efforts on cleaning the property up. I'm here and asked to speak in behalf of Joan and Garrett Perkins, the owners. He will be back from Arizona on the 30th in two days. And but in the process of that time, I had gone and seen Clarence? Yes. Last week, I came and saw the building and Code Enforcement, and told them that we would be putting more effort in getting the property cleaned up during this week. The efforts that I would like to have seen didn't get accomplished because we needed keys for the vehicles that were there and some other issues that- so I, after talking to Mr. Perkins, it was agreed that we would just wait till he gets back on the 30th, and I was going to ask for an extension to complete everything. And it sounds like you're in agreement with a vote of making that next, another final approach to inspection. The property was purchased about seven years ago. It was strictly for an investment property. That's all it was. He was told through Vista here, that through the city, that he was allowed to use it for commercial, storage, whatever. It wasn't a big deal at the time. Now that they're building a- the biggest, one of the biggest projects here in Vista, that I think it's 64 units, if I'm mistaken, something like that, where they've got all the scrapers, and they're doing the land reprocessing just right next to his property. It's on, it's by Old Taylor. And well, that property is going to require what's called a bioswale. Everybody's, every property, rural, is required to contain their own water. It's not allowed to be run off anymore, just into wherever. And Mr. Perkins' property in the corner happens to be the lowest, and he's had that all documented and with engineers, geologists, and it's for the perking and everything for it to be able to be a proper point for a drain point. And Mr. Perkins is hoping that to sell the property. And but doesn't want to make the property, you know, is not investing in the property to try to make it, you know, nice, to try to sell it for, you know, somebody to move in there. It's strictly for the property alone, hoping that the contractor may be interested in purchasing it. And there was already conversation with the engineer. And I'll let you, Mr. Perkins, talk to Clarence when he-
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Appreciate it. I think the issue is, and I'll, I think I'll speak on behalf of our Code Enforcement Department, to say, you basically gave them six different opportunities to cure the problem. So, while it may have been a few weeks since you've been out there at each of these opportunities that you communicated with the property owner or attempted to, I would assume, because I've seen these notifications, the request to cure the deficiency became more and more dire with warnings that an action like the one being taken tonight would be taken if they weren't cured. And so, your last warning date having come several weeks before today kind of irrelevant and immaterial to the fact that all of those deadlines were missed and many opportunities were given. And I have said, as long as I've been on this council, and I think every member of this council agrees with this, we do not want to issue fines to anybody that lives in our city or does business in our city. It is the last thing we want to do. And we do not want to clean up anybody else's, you know, code violation or hire engineers to go in anybody's home. It's the last thing that we want to do. We would vastly have referred that the property owner would have cured this and that we didn't have to take it on. Unfortunately, you know, my request to our Code Enforcement Department and our city manager remains, and I will redouble it tonight and add more emphasis to it without regard to this property, that we need to be quicker to take these kind of actions to make sure that we are taking care of these Code Enforcement violations because they are safety issues and they are quality life issues for all of our residents. And for every inconvenience that a code violation notice places on the owner of the property, there are other safety hazards and inconveniences being placed on neighbors and tenants. And so, I think the work we're doing here is very important. And with that, I think if it had been important enough, the property owner would have cured it by now, let alone come from Arizona two days earlier. But really, nothing short of having cured it by the last deadline given would have prevented this action tonight. So, we are where we are at, and hopefully, you know, if the property owner will work with us, I know that Mr. Rich will work with the property owner, and it will be fair. We're not, we don't need a nickel off of 1820, whatever the address is here. We don't need your money. We don't want your money. We don't want the property owner's money. We just want the problem solved. That's all it's about. So, appreciate you coming. We just want to make it safe for you. And we're good people. We're just trying to serve the community. So, we're sorry that this negatively affected you in the place that you live. We do have compassion for that. And we do recognize the difficulty that you're in. So, thank you for being here tonight. We're going to, we're going to close the opportunity for public comment, and we've got a motion as second. So, we're going to cast votes here. Please cast your votes, council. Okay, that item passes unanimously. That's going to bring us to our first discussion item. We have three this evening. And as a reminder, item D4, navigation center location, the Business Park, has been removed from the agenda. It's no longer under consideration. D1, our first item regarding the proposed Oak Drive pedestrian crossing and crossing guard. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raise their hand feature, by pressing star nine, or submitting a request to speak card. Speakers will be called upon after the presentation. Councilmember Contreras asked for this item to be on the agenda, so we'll ask her to introduce it.
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor. Well, first of all, I just want to bring this before the council. I know that this is not in my district, so hopefully, we can have a good conversation. Councilmember Fox, since this is here in your district. But this came about from just longstanding community ties that I have, conversations about things that, you know, we're looking to improve in my district. And it turns out that the community here has been asking for a long time if there could be some kind of safe crossing or speed reduction. This is Oak Drive, right in front of an elementary school. And we, I bring my laptop, and I walk people through the GIS layers, and we looked at the emergency fire, and kind of was a little shocked. I noticed that there was a gap, and it really allowed for us to envision what a pedestrian crossing would look like there. This has already gone through review with our fire department. And basically, I'm looking to see if we can allocate some funding and make some improvements. Now, the improvements can come in a variety of forms. Just to put a raised crosswalk and have the push button that has the little flashy lights is around $60,000. If you want to make it a little bit more safe, you would do the ball belts. So, that puts us at $150,000. And then, secondly, you know, I think it's really interesting, the crossing guard item. We have been providing funding for crossing guards to Vista Unified School District for quite some time. This has just been kind of like a historic practice. However, we've never discussed whether or not there might be some schools that need additional help and if there's a way to prioritize which locations, you know, could use some additional help with crossing. So, I felt like this is a good opportunity to kind of bring those things together. Do we have any speakers on this?
We do.
Okay, I would love to hear from the community, see what they have to say, and then we can take up the discussion. Thank you.
Okay, when I call your name, please go ahead and come forward, grab a seat in the front row. Be ready to speak when you, as your turn to speak. We'll start with Luis Torres, and we'll hear from Hadaya Batista, then from Myrna Casillas. If you heard your name called, go ahead and come forward, grab a seat in the front row for us. Luis Torres? Go ahead, sir. You've got three minutes.
Hello, my name is Luis Torres, and this is my son, Sean Torres. Recently, Sean has enrolled in a kindergarten. And as we sometimes walk from the school and to the school, and definitely as the map has designed, I asked a similar question in the past. Why hasn't there been a crossing guard and a crosswalk right in front of the school? I attended Santa Fe Elementary a long time ago, and they always had a crosswalk right across the street from the school, and I always went by it there. And it was safe and secure. And since funds are available for a crossing guard, that would be extra safe, you know, gives the assurance that our children will be crossing. And hope one day, Sean, if we can walk across said crosswalk in the future, that would be excellent for our safety and also for our fellow parents and students that attend the school. And also, we'd like to, I'd like to address that, you know, safety is an issue in that neighborhood, and we'd like to thank you for the consideration, and it is totally needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll hear from Hadaya Batista, followed by Myrna Casillas, followed by Zoila Ramos. Hadaya? Just speak into that microphone.
Sorry. Uh, mi nombre es Hadaya Batista. Sorry, soy un poco nerviosa.
Put the microphone a la boca.
Okay, sorry. Estoy un poco nerviosa. Pero estoy aquí para representar, bueno, represento parte de la comunidad de los apartamentos robles. El que estamos aquí por foot heel up, tenemos un pequeño problema con los cruces peatonales que es un poquito difícil para que los niños crucen. También para nosotros los adultos es un poquito complicado llegar a nuestras- to cross. Also, for adults, it's a bit complicated to get to our homes when we come from the work, because there's a lot of traffic. And, well, we always have to walk around, we have to turn, because cars are blocking our doors, blocking our entrance to our apartments. I sent a video to Mr. Jeff Fox, I don't know if he received it on Gmail, I don't know, but I sent it through Gmail. I took a video of the little problems that happen there. And, well, I want to support my community. And, well, also for the children to be more secure at home. That's all. Thank you for your attention.
Muchas gracias. Okay, next we'll hear from Myrna Casillas, followed by Zoila Ramos, followed by Andy Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, city staff, and specifically Mr. Fox from my district, District Two. My name is Myrna Casillas, and I'm here to speak in strong support of Agenda Item D1, the proposal for a raised pedestrian crossing at the intersection of Oak Drive and Isabella Way North, which is in front of Foothill Oak Elementary School, along with the addition of a new school crossing guard. Every school day, hundreds of children, parents and caregivers cross that intersection. During arrival and dismissal times, traffic volumes are high, visibility can be limited, and drivers are often in a hurry. Despite existing signage and painted crosswalks, many parents and staff have expressed concerns about speeding and near misses. It only takes one distracted driver, one unsafe moment for a tragedy to occur. A raised pedestrian crossing would not only slow vehicles, but also provide a clear visual cue that this is a school zone, a place where children's safety comes first, period. These types of crossings have been proven in other communities to reduce vehicle speeds and improve driver awareness significantly. Equally important is the addition of a dedicated crossing guard. Having a trained adult present provides guidance for students, reassurance for parents, and accountability for drivers. It's a small investment that yields enormous returns in safety and community trust. Foothill Oak Elementary serves a diverse population, including many families who walk to school. Ensuring that all our children can do so safely is a fundamental responsibility we all share. This improvement aligns perfectly with our city's Vision Zero and Safe Routes to School goals. I urge the council to approve this measure and move forward with the implementation as soon as possible. Let's be proactive rather than reactive by protecting our students before an accident forces us to act. Thank you for your understanding of the urgency of this matter at hand, and for your continued commitment to make our streets safer for everyone. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Now, we'll hear from Zoila Ramos, followed by Andy Rodriguez, followed by Teresa Motta.
Buenas tardes. Buenas tardes, members of the council and community. I told you, and especially Jeff Fox. Today, I am speaking in the name of the residents of the apartments of Los Robles, the community housing, located near Foothill Oak Elementary School. We are here to support firmly the proposal to install a crossroad elevated in the intersection of Oak Drive and Isabella Way, as well as the assignment of a new guardian of cross school in this area. Every day, children, parents, and grandparents of our community walk down the streets nearby, to Foothill Elementary School, to the school, to work, to exercise. However, pedestrians frequently don't respect the limits of speed, which represents a constant risk, especially for children. The installation of a crossroad elevated would make the crossroads more visible and would force pedestrians to reduce their speed, protecting our families. Furthermore, the presence of a new guardian of cross school reinforced security in the hours of entry and exit. We thank the Councilwoman Contreras for including this topic on the agenda of the council. Her support shows that our voices are being heard, and that we can achieve safer streets and a more active community. Protecting the lives and the safety of our neighbors is a priority, and this measure can prevent accidents and improve the quality of life for all. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. I swear from Andy Rodriguez, followed by Teresa Motta, followed by Priscilla on Zoom.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and the present community. My name is Andy Rodriguez, and I represent the residents of Los Robles, near Foothill Oak Elementary. Today, we are gathered to support a proposition to install a new elevated crosswalk in the intersection of Oak Drive and Isabella Way, and the assignment of a new crossing guard near the school. These aren't only technical requests, these are a human necessity. Every morning, we watch children walk to school, their parents accompanying them. We watch grandparents, our elders, going out for a walk. But we also witness cars passing way too quickly, putting lives at risk recklessly. An elevated crosswalk and a crossing guard are not luxuries. They are an investment in security and community. In Vista, we would like there to be a place where we can walk with confidence and without fear. We thank the Council of Vista for listening to our concerns, and to Councilman Fox for representing our district. Together, we can show that Vista prioritizes the lives and the well-being of our citizens. Thank you for your attention.
Next, we'll hear from Teresa Motta, followed by Priscilla on Zoom.
Buenas tardes. My name is Teresa Motta. I'm residente, I'm residente of Los Robles, and mother of an student of Foothill Oak Elementary. Every morning, I see children crossing Oak Drive and Isabella Way, between cars that pass rapidly or don't stop completely. It's a dangerous, dangerous danger every day. A crossroad elevated would make the pedestrians reduce their speed and remember that they are in front of a school. And a guardian of cross would help guide and protect the children. We don't talk about infra, infrastructures, but about safety for families. Please approve this project and demonstrate that the safety of our children is a real priority. Thank you for listening and for your commitment to our community. Thank you to the mayor and to the members, and especially to Jeff Fox, for listening and for providing support for us and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from Claudia Careño, here in the chambers. Claudia?
Buenas tardes, members of the council. My name is Claudia Careño, and I am speaking in the name of the residents of Los Robles. The intersection of Oak Drive and Isabella Way, next to Foothill Oak Elementary, presents a constant flow of crossroads, children, parents, and older adults. However, the lack of, the lack of infrastructure is adequate, and the excessive speed of some pedestrians creates a high-risk situation. Therefore, we request the installation of a crossroad elevated, which has been examined, that reduces the vehicle speed and improves the crossroad visibility, along with the assignment of a new guardian of cross, that reinforces security in critical hours. We thank the council for including this topic on the agenda, and the Councilwoman Fox for her leadership in District Two. With her support, Vista can be a model of security and community planning responsibility. Thank you for your attention and your commitment.
Thank you. Now we're going to hear from Priscilla on Zoom. Go ahead, Priscilla.
My name is Altazar Secundino. I agree with the proposal. Thank you for listening to all the council, and especially the councilman Jeff Fox. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll now close the opportunity for public comment on this item. We'll hear from Councilmember Jeff Fox.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't push. My bad. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for everyone coming out tonight and voicing your concerns. This is exactly what we're here to, here for. So if you have any concerns like this, please feel free to reach out to me at any time. I'm more than happy to work with, with anyone. So, but I also like to thank Councilmember Contreras for bringing this forward. And, you know, it's not every day we get to step out of our, our areas and, and work with, with people in the other, other districts, but it's, you know, an important part of our role. We represent all Vistins, not just, you know, our local district. So unfortunately, I did, I did get the email, but the video didn't work. So I, but luckily, I do live right on Foothill and Vista Way, in those townhomes right there, where I, I see that, that street from my, my window every day. So I'm very familiar with the, with the area and the traffic that can be there, especially, you know, when school is coming in and out and, and all that. So I had a couple of questions just for, for city staff. Have we had any communication with Foothill Oak Elementary or the school district or anything? Have they had any requests, any requests?
Directly to staff, you mean?
Just that, have we heard from the, the school that there was a need for, for anything like this?
The school has expressed concerns about safety in the past, and parking, and speeding motorists. We've had those issues with the school since they've been there. We were hoping we were going to resolve some of that with the roundabout that was put there. So that was the last project in that area.
Okay. And, and I know we, we've, we've done some crossing guards in the past, but it, is that typical with, with these kinds of arrangements?
We have an agreement with the school district to provide crossing guards at four locations. It was agreed to back in 2004.
Okay.
Changed it since then.
Okay. I mean, so I'm definitely open to doing some sort of, if there's an issue there, to doing something to mitigate it. I think, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not an engineer and expert on the best traffic mitigation tools for an area. So whether a raised crosswalk is specifically the best option or not, you know, I'd, I'd like to kind of talk to our, you know, our engineering staff in the school to see if they think that that's the best option versus, say, two speed bumps with the crosswalk in between, or, you know, what different thing would actually be the best solution there. And so, you know, I'd be, I'd be happy for our, to open a conversation with, with the school districts and, and our, if we could have our, you know, engineering department work with the school district and see if there's, if there's any recommendations there. When it comes to the crossing guard, I mean, if, if most crossing guards are typically covered by the school district, I'd, I'd love to see if they're willing to cover that, and if that's, if they think it's necessary, and if they want help with it, then to let us know. And, yeah, so, so I'm, I'm open to, to doing something. I'm not, I'm, I couldn't be supportive of voting for a very specific, a specific device tonight without knowing what the best, what the best solution is, without talking to our, you know, the engineering team, having them look at it and see what they said that that's. Yes, is Sam or anyone who can speak on, ah, I see you in the back. There you go. Thank you, sir. Yeah, come on down to the Price is Right. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, so we have kind of taken an initial look at the raised crosswalk, and I do think it would be a good improvement at the location where it's proposed. And it has been requested in the past from that neighborhood. We have had complaints from the school over the years, like John mentioned, with speeding and issues like that.
Have we spoken with them about this, about a raised crosswalk in this location in particular? Is it, is this the one where they think is, it is the, the best loca, the best place with the best item? Or have we looked at alternatives?
We have not reached out yet on the specific proposal.
Okay. Have we internally looked at any, any alternatives, like speed bumps or, you know, in the flashing lights and all that kind of fun stuff?
Yeah, there's only a very short.
Stop sign, what, you know?
Yeah, so we have looked at a stop sign in the past at both those intersections, that Isabella Way, where it comes out, there's two places where that street meets Oak. We have looked at stop signs. It did not meet the warrants. And I think that would probably cause some congestion during the school start and release. And also, with, on the fire, on the emergency response roadmap, there's only a short segment of the street that is not designated. So it kind of, you know, speed bumps would not be allowed in the whole stretch of Oak. So it's kind of a short gap where we can do something raised.
Okay, so, but a good portion of Oak is covered under this, the fire? Does this look like it could have been a mistake?
Checked, I checked with fire, yeah.
Sorry, you can see. Fire route is, the crossed hatch line is the fire restricted route.
That's, that's a, is there any?
You can see, though, that this was based on a GIS analysis of where the trucks are going to call. So it's clear that they're going up to Isabella Way.
And that's the entrance they're using? So it looks intentional?
So, yeah, these are routes that they frequently use, and this was the adopted map. So there is a gap there, but it's really because of Isabella Way.
Okay. I guess that's, that's my concern is that, you know, it's a GIS layer that maybe someone didn't click a button or something, and there's just a little gap that's, you know, that they're going to get all mad at us for. Okay, so, well, I think that's, that's all my questions for now. I, you know, again, like, I'd be curious to see if there's any, you know, alternatives that would be more, more conducive to that versus specifically a raised crosswalk. Just, you know, I'm getting presented one option without a staff recommendation for a specific option. I would also be curious to see what the school's thoughts on, were on location and, you know, all that kind of stuff. But before, you know, rush into building a $150,000, you know, apparatus, you know, if there's something that would do the same, or have same or more, a better effect. So that's it for now, but I'd love to hear from the rest of my council.
Deputy Mayor Melendez.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming out to the meeting tonight. It looks like there's an opportunity for us to improve the public right of way here, school or not. You know, this is an area with homes and families. Speeding is occurring, and we currently don't have any traffic calming instruments that would be instruments in the road, right? Like speed humps or speed tables, which is an even more idealized form of a speed hump, because you get two in one. You get the crossing and you get the obstruction there in the road that slows down motorists. So I would say, you know, just the serendipity of the path of our, our fire response, you know, this is a great opportunity to slow down motorists traffic that normally is, is whipping through there. While also, you know, it's, it's not going to be a burden to our first responders because they're able to get into that neighborhood there really easily. And then the speed tables in general, I think that they're great. Thank you, Councilmember Contreras, for bringing this recommendation forward. And I also know you spearheaded the speed tables, the first speed tables we ever had in Vista. You spearheaded those. You guys might have noticed the new speed table in downtown Vista, right across the street from the AVO. That's a great crossing right there. I love it. It's just so accessible and feels super safe. People are, are more respectful downtown because there's that nice quality infrastructure there. So this is a great opportunity to improve the public right of way. I think a speed table would be awesome. Programmatically, funding a crossing guard, you know, if it's outside of our public right of way, I would want to investigate what is the school district's obligation and start with that. and start with that. But I think that this would be a good traffic calming in the area, not just for the school, but also for the surrounding neighborhood. And, you know, for reference, I have recently had a school in District 3 reach out to me asking for some crossing assistance, but they are not eligible for speed humps over there because it is, the maps for the fire prohibits us from putting traffic calming in that area. So in the areas that we can, right, we can exercise our authority to do so. So yeah, I would support it. I don't know if there's a motion on the floor, but, you know, these are, we've seen them be pretty effective for what the community's goals are, right? The community's goals are to be able to connect between their neighborhood and the school. Their goal is also to have the traffic slowed down in general because there's, you know, families nearby. And then also just continue having circulation and mobility. Like, I think that this will just enhance the recent traffic circle improvements that were made. So yeah, get the kids over that, the bridge of this road a little bit easier with a speed table. Thanks.
Councilmember O'Donnell.
User error with my microphone. I apologize. Sam, could you please come back down? So I also want to thank all the speakers for coming out tonight. I really do appreciate it. My first question is, does it need to be a raised median? Because if we put a crosswalk in with the flashing signals, could it not accomplish the same thing? Or does it need to be a raised median?
The raised, the speed table.
Speed table, sorry.
It would be highly recommended, yes, to make sure that the traffic actually slows down going across the crosswalk.
I guess my greater question is if they're already going to roll over it. And I'm not, I'm just asking for clarity on it because if we're going to spend $60,000, when we could spend 15, say, you know, it's a big difference. But is the intent to slow them down once they hit it or before they get there?
Before they get there.
Okay, so the idea is that if they're aware that it's there, they're going to slow down regardless of whether there's pedestrians in the crosswalk or not? Okay, that makes sense. To the city manager, if we add a crossing guard, would we have to reopen the current agreement we have with Vista Unified?
More than likely, yeah. I'm going to guess that's how they, we're going to have to have an agreement of some kind with them to provide the crossing guard. So it's either a new agreement or we reopen what we have.
And is there potential to add an increase, since that was last negotiated in 2004, to the cost of additional crossing guards?
That potential exists.
That's scary to me. I just want you to know that. So I don't know if I would add a crossing guard, but what I would want to do is speak to Vista Unified. And I'm actually not supportive of this. I just want a little bit more clarity around it because if we can do a partnership or either, like, if we want to do $150,000, if they can contribute something to it, that would be helpful, especially if it's going to be a crossing guard or some aspect in the infrastructure that's actually put in place. The other question I have, and I'm not familiar with this street because I don't travel it very often, but why is the crosswalk in the middle between two intersections when it could be at a sidewalk?
So that would depend on if we do the raised crosswalk without the curb extensions, it could go right at the intersection. If it were to be done with the popouts, it would have to be to the south because of drainage and at the intersection of Isabel, there's a cross cutter, so we would have to avoid that.
So if we don't do the popouts, would you recommend putting it at one of these intersections? Either Isabel or on Isabel Way?
Yeah, it would probably go on the northerly intersection. But with the popouts, of course, it would be a better installation, but the cost is higher.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, I can be supportive, but I just want to get a little bit more information, have a conversation with Vista Unified, maybe see if there's some funding or other available resources from VUSD, and then maybe bring it back to the council. I don't know if I'm ready to vote on it tonight, but I think that for what we're looking at and based on Sam's recommendations and the fact that it's already been reviewed, it doesn't interfere with the fire map. I think it's something I could probably get on board with, but just with a little bit more information, so.
Councilmember Contreras.
Fantastic. Okay, yeah, so, you know, this is, like I said, I noticed that there is this gap. And so I think that we have a unique opportunity here to immediately enhance this area. VUSD and the residents for a long time have been asking for this type of improvement. I don't want to, you know, have this contingent upon Vista Unified School District paying for a portion of this raised median. We happen to, you know, be moving into discussions about how we have additional funding available in our budget. I think this is a fantastic way to show this community that we are listening to them and that we're addressing their concerns. When it comes to the crossing guard, I think it would be really awesome if we opened up this conversation, not even to add another one at this point, but to give direction to staff, that we start having communication with Vista Unified School District regarding the crossing guard, just because, you know, it's, 2004 was a really, really long time ago. So I think it's just good practice, I think, to open up that communication and see, even if there's a prioritization that Vista Unified School District has for where they would recommend having an additional crossing guard. And maybe it's here, maybe it's somewhere else. You know, maybe it's at Rancho One of Vista High School, maybe it's at, you know, Bo Beers Elementary. I don't know, but I do hear from the council that there is curiosity around the crossing guard, whether or not we would be able to fund it as we have been funding for different school sites for quite some time. You know, that's something that we can discuss later in the future, but I do get the sense that we can have this discussion about crossing guards. And city manager, is that something that you would do? You know, you would, you or your team would discuss directly with Vista Unified School District? Just?
Sure, yeah, we can contact the superintendent.
Okay, fantastic. And then when it comes to fire, I mean, this is, I had to wait just some time as I discovered that this was a gap, and I was like, hey, is this a glitch or, you know, what's going on? And so this was reviewed internally, and it, there is no issue whatsoever with putting a raised pedestrian crossing. I would say, you know, I understand needing a little bit more clarity in talking to Vista Unified School District, but I also understand the other side, that we have had those communications with them over the course of many years, and this has been a concern. And we do have the ability tonight to move in the direction of making this safety change for the community. And this is a newer school site. It's going to be here for a very long time. And there is no traffic calming on Oak Drive until you get to the roundabout. So it's just a really long stretch, and it would be great for this council to really put safety first and community first and move forward with a very small amount, $60,000, for improving the safety in perpetuity here.
Councilmember O'Donnell.
I guess my only question then, because those are valid points. My only question would be if, whether we approve it tonight or remove it to when we have the year-end fund discussion, would that delay the project itself? Because I have to imagine that this isn't something, even if we approve tonight, is going to be implemented.
No, what I would need tonight is direction from the council to include it on the list of projects that you'd like to consider as part of the year-end fund balance, which will come to you at the next meeting.
With the consideration of having communicated with Vista Unified, I mean, I don't want to step on.
I can certainly do that before the next meeting.
I'd definitely be open to that.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd like to see staff work with VUSD and also come back with a recommendation the staff is fully behind. Councilmember Fox.
So, I mean, and I think that this is a good example of, you know, we're putting together our traffic calming policy of, you know, of this rolling period of, you know, application period of here's where, here's the process moving forward. But if there's an emergency, like an immediate need, I don't see any reason that we can't have specific projects come up. Like, if there's a specific need in the community that we see, then I think it's totally valid for us to bring it up, even though, you know, typically there's a process for it. Now, I mean, I think, I think I'm, I mean, I would even be okay with it coming back on something like consent as long as we had, you know, a conversation with, at least for the, at least for the raised crosswalk itself, the bumpouts and all that kind of stuff, I think we'd probably want to discuss options and everything. But just after that conversation with, like, to see what the school district, if they think that the raised sidewalk in particular, unless that's the specific conversation we had with them, it's hard for me to tell, right? Like, that a speed bump closer to Isabel Way, the southern Isabel Way, with a crosswalk there and a speed bump closer, and north of the northern Isabel Way, where they have, you know, like, versus that, it's hard for me to know for sure which one would be more effective and which one the school district themselves would prefer as well. And so that's, I don't think it's, I think that it's a totally reasonable place to be putting something right across from a school. A crosswalk makes a whole lot of sense there. So like, I don't have a problem with even this exact thing. I just would like to have that conversation first with the school district. So that's it. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Melendez.
Thank you. Just building some consensus here. Sounds like the concept of a crossing is supported by everyone on the council. And then we still would have to explore financing specifics, right? There could be a partnership. It sounds like the school district has been asking the city to improve our public right-of-way for some time. So, yeah, I definitely agree. I don't want that to be the make or break for the safety improvement. But seeing as we have not discussed, you know, the use of surplus funds at this time, I would be supportive of, you know, supporting the project. We have many capital improvement projects that we know are needed, and we get to show our support for them. But we do have to take next steps in order to figure out how to finance them and, you know, go through the steps into construction. So it will take us a little bit more time, but I definitely support it and good discussion.
Councilmember Contreras.
Amazing. Thank you so much for all your support, and thank you to the community for coming out. I would like to offer a motion just for clarity. I like what you said, Councilmember Fox, about even putting this on consent at the next agenda. I'm okay with that. I'm okay with giving direction to city manager that this is something that we want to include in our list for the year-end fund balance. There's two different ways to go about it. So the motion that I'll make is to pursue a raised pedestrian crossing, to communicate with Vista Unified School District and receive their input, and to have this come back to us when we discuss our year-end fund balances. Is that November 12th? So at the November 12th meeting as part of a list. The other thing that I would ask staff is that if we could have some renderings of what it looks like as a raised pedestrian crossing and then a raised pedestrian crossing with the bulb out and where those locations would be best for either one of those devices. I think that would be really helpful as well, and even in the communication with Vista Unified School District. So is it clear what's in the motion? Okay, awesome.
Deputy Mayor.
I would second that. I would just want to clarify with staff that, you know, we know we're going to have that budgeting discussion on the 12th, but will we have enough time to, between now and then, discuss with the school district and provide those renderings that you're asking for?
Yeah, that gives us enough time to talk to the district. I'm not sure we can do the renderings at the staff level, but we'll do our best.
Okay, we'll bring some preliminary renderings then. I could support that. So I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. A second, please, cash your votes. That item is approved unanimously. That will bring us to item D2, the Downtown Committee Recommendations to the City Council. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raise their hand feature by pressing star nine or submitting a request to speak card here at the dais. Speakers will be called upon after the presentation. Our Community Development Director, Joe Vaca, will introduce this item.
Thank you very much, Mayor Franklin and members of the city council. After many months of hard work, we're excited to bring this item before you this evening. So I'm going to start with some background on the Downtown Committee. As far back as 2019, city council discussed the existing gazebo plan on two occasions, and they ultimately directed staff to work with the business community on options to improve the public space, and then it was kind of put on hold. Then in last year, March 26th, the city council discussed street closures in the historic downtown area, and they did request that staff evaluate options, in particular, to look at improving parking, to evaluate street closures, both permanent and temporary, and to improve the public spaces in the historic downtown area. Then on October 8th and then the 22nd of last year, the city council ultimately directed staff to establish an ad hoc committee, and it was to include a variety of members. And the council appointed Councilmember Contreras to the committee and directed staff to bring back conceptual sketches prior to funding any official traffic engineering studies or improvements. So the committee took that charge and started going to work to develop those concepts. So the committee was comprised of 11 members, again chaired by Councilmember Contreras. The vice chair was Terry Woods, who represented the CV bid as an advisory committee member. We had a planning commissioner, Lisa DeJesus, a traffic commissioner, Sharon Larimer, a member of the Chamber of Commerce, Lev Gershman. We had two business owners from the historic downtown area, Natalie Trevino and Mike Zane. We also had two property owners from the historic downtown area, Clay McCarthy and Julie Lowen. And then we also had two residents, Ann Pate and Deanna Ferrone. And then the staff efforts were led mostly by the city manager's office, and John Connolly spearheaded the effort and did an excellent job. And then staff from Public Works, Economic Development, Planning and Engineering all contributed to the effort. The historic downtown area for the public is generally bound by Vista Village Drive to the north, to the south by Eucalyptus Avenue, to the west by South Santa Fe Avenue, and to the east by South Citrus Avenue. This aerial photograph shows the city-owned parcels, and the scope included an evaluation of the city-owned gazebo property for public space enhancements along with all the right-of-way in the downtown area. So the Downtown Committee did work hard over several months and held several meetings and eventually comprised six meetings in total. And they discussed the parking and circulation, the gazebo and public plaza and art, overall landscape and streetscape and hardscape improvements, pedestrian access and connectivity, including accessibility, wayfinding and lighting. The city staff also worked with our consultants, Rick Engineering, on developing these alternatives that will be presented to you by the committee this evening. So the committee ultimately refined the options and selected preferred alternatives that will be outlined later in this presentation by priority. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our traffic engineer, Mr. Hassanan.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. So the first area of improvements that we looked at was parking and circulation on public streets. And to begin their work, Rick Engineering mapped the existing downtown area with all the existing conditions. They conducted a park and inventory and occupancy studies. They also evaluated existing street operations or operating conditions. And then with input from the committee and city staff, Rick Engineering developed three scenarios to improve circulation and parking on downtown streets with the following considerations: parking gain, emergency access impacts, traffic operations, opportunities to enhance public space, and potential traffic diversion into the alleys in downtown. So the committee, after discussing the three alternatives, the committee selected the alternative with the following features: one-way couplet, which is westbound on Main Street and eastbound on Broadway, temporary street closure of Indiana Avenue between Main Street and Broadway, Street and Broadway for special events, and then, the additional street width that would be gained from the one-way street conversions, would allow for reorienting the existing parking spaces, and would result in a net parking gain of approximately 55 parking spaces. This is what the concept looks like, just kind of a basic of showing the strip in, that shows the parking would be converted from angle to heading, or 90 degree, and also, the planter areas would have to, all of them have to be reoriented to meet kind of the new configuration of the parking, as well as, of course, the one-way couplet on Main and Broadway. Looks like the next slide would be yours. So, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Vaca.
Thank you, now, we're going to give an overview of the downtown concept plan, and then we'll speak specifically to the updates in the plan. So, this is an image that shows the overall improvements with enhanced landscaping, paving, it's going to include a plan for sage shales in our parking areas, an enhanced plaza, and a cap and trail over Buena Vista Creek. This is a site map that shows the gazebo and plaza area with enhanced seating areas, play areas for kids, adult seating with adult swings, and then, these are renderings of the gazebo and plaza area, and again, we're going to speak to all the particulars that the Downtown Committee had recommended based on priority. So, first, for the short-term priorities, beginning now through 2030 or before 2030, the highest priorities are the first three bulleted areas, and that would be to develop a one-way circulation pattern on Main Street and Broadway, to increase the on-street parking, review all available on-street parking opportunities, and increase parking where feasible, provide ride-share drop-off zones on Main Street and Broadway, and then, next, they're still the highest priority, but they're not considered the top priorities, but to review accessible parking space locations for even distribution within the project area, replace street trees and landscaping throughout the project area, and improve safety and aesthetics, and develop and implement a unified plan for the area, as shown on the concept. Additional short-term priorities are to develop bulb outs and seating areas within the project area to improve pedestrian safety and comfort, identify locations for public art, and fund and install new artworks, and maintain public art in the project area, improve lighting and implement pedestrian-level lighting where feasible, provide additional bicycle racks, provide wayfinding signage for public parking and features specific to this area, utilize public art, treat alleys and improve pedestrian safety, and implement speed humps in the alleys, allow closure of South Indiana Avenue between Main Street and Broadway on a temporary basis for special events, evenings and weekends, and define street closure methods with artistic or unique barriers, and to allow for more frequent street closures. Also, provide opportunities for additional shade in the city's public parking lots with shade sales, preserve patio areas and define outdoor dining and seating spaces for businesses in the project area, and provide better pedestrian connections to project areas from the Transit Center, Vista Village, and the surrounding neighborhoods. Then, the medium term would be to try to initiate these items by 2035 or before, and it would be to define the northern portion of South Indiana from Main to Broadway with the accent paving, landscape treatment, and other design alternatives, to denote this as a main gathering area, and then, this would focus also on the city's property, where we have the existing gazebo, to develop a new park at the southeast corner of Main Street in Indiana, and to retain some perpendicular parking adjacent to that alley, and the park amenities would include green and open space with additional trees and shade, seating and adult swing, event space with stage with utilities, vendor-friendly areas, replace and enhance the gazebo, public art, drinking fountain, pet-friendly and kids' play areas with bicycle parking. Then, ultimately, the long term, which would be past 2035, is to focus on defining the southern portion of South Indiana from Broadway to Eucalyptus, and that would match what would be done to the north with accent paving, and then, also to cover the Buena Vista Creek Channel and develop a pedestrian walkway and link to the plaza area and throughout downtown by extending pedestrian trails from the city's parking lot on Broadway, all the way through to South Santa Fe Avenue. So, this evening, we presented the overall concept items by priority that are bulleted, that are reflected in the planned concepts that I showed you on the images, so if it's the City Council's desire to support the recommendations of the committee, staff would then return for final review of the downtown concept plans, which would ultimately include any SEQA analysis, this would be part of the recommendations for new projects and funding as part of the city's capital improvement program and budget process, and if the City Council would like to change any of these recommendations, staff can return with the downtown concept plan as modified from the City Council's consideration. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you, yes, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do.
You know what, I will hold until we hear public comment, thank you.
Start with Sharon Larimer, followed by Monica Shellup, followed by Lev Gershman, followed by Epi.
It's not on, oh, it is now. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I, as the chairman of the Traffic Commission, I was honored to be able to be a member of the downtown meeting. Also, I'm the chairman of the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission, even though they weren't officially there, I kind of covered their area also. So, what my husband Jack and I did one time is we got our disability scooters, and went down Main Street, Citrus, East Broadway, back around, and then, this, back to Main Street, and we came up with some recommendations that might be able to be done, that we gave to Mr. Connolly and Councilmember Contreras, to see if possibly some of the items that were found could be repaired, because some of them aren't necessarily for disabled scooters, but some of that were elevated, some areas on the sidewalk that people could trip on, and so, we basically submit them, and Mr. Connolly said he would pass it on to Public Works and see what they possibly could do to help out, without being a big financial situation. The other thing that I forgot to mention when we had our meeting is, when we're talking about trying to get the money to do this little park, the same way with the Moonlight Amphitheater did, why don't we try to get people to donate money, because they might donate to a park, which they might not donate to a street, and to donate money and provide little plaques that you could do along the walls that may be created at the, at the park, designating these people as having donated money, which should maybe speed up the installation of the park sooner than, after 2035. Did I miss anything? I think that's it, I just wanted to, and I'm hoping the council will consider what we suggested, I think they are some great suggestions, and hopefully, they will be happy with our recommendations. Thank you so much.
Thank you, next, we'll hear from Monica Shellup.
Thank you, it's Monica Shellup. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my husband, Camille Shellup, his family's been here since 1928, and his father and grandfather had one of the biggest department stores and five-and-dime stores in this, this community for many, many years. A year and a month ago, I opened up Mosaic Fabrics in downtown Vista on 222 East Broadway, and this was brought to my attention by my landlady, and I was concerned, because for you to change the direction of traffic from one way, one, one direction to the other, is going to affect my business. I already have a problem with senior people coming from different places, and my, I'm bringing people from San Diego, Palway, El Cajon, to come and visit and buy my, our merchandise, and they're already complaining about not being able to find parking. That's not a directional problem, that's a parking problem that the city has had for decades. I've been here for 26 years, I'm originally from Whittier, where the population is actually less than Vista's, and I had a business in uptown Whittier, I was a hairstylist, and at that time, I had a salon, and when I was a child, Whittier was directional driving, and they changed that because of the population growth, and the, in the amount of traffic that the businesses were getting, and not being able to retain because of the one-way directional. That's something to think about and consider. There's other ideas of, of helping the parking problem, that's something you ought to think about, and I can guarantee you, if you're going to rip up my city, my, my street in front of my business, you're going to kill me. You're going to kill me. That's, that's something you need to think about, and it's not just my business, it's other businesses also. So, please consider us, we're making Vista Vista. Thank you.
Thank you, Lev Gershman, followed by Epi.
Good evening, my name is Lev Gershman, I'm managing partner of Tideline Partners, we're a property owner and a long-term stakeholder and believer in all things downtown Vista, thank you for having me tonight. As a volunteer member of the Downtown Committee, I'm grateful for the opportunity to continue working with a caring and passionate group of people, working to make Vista better. I want to thank Councilmember Contreras for bringing this forward, and Mayor Franklin and Council for working together to make this a reality, not an easy thing to do. This endeavor takes a team and a unified goal, special recognition to city engineers, Sam and Greg, who are often behind the scenes, making sure the city continues to operate efficiently and is safe, so thank you guys, a lot goes into this, I appreciate it. I think the recommendations shared by staff are, that came out of the committee, obviously, I'm a member of the committee, so I'm a little biased, but I don't necessarily agree with everything, they're thoughtful and they're appropriate to meet the key, key issue that was expressed by the stakeholders, which was, or parking. From the recommendations, since staff presented those, I'll just zoom into a couple of points beyond the recommendation, our development team supports Alternative 3, which is Exhibit 4.3 on page 28 of Rick Engineering's report, this adds landscaping, it adds 60 to 70 parking spaces, it does turn streets into one-way, there's pros and cons, it adds flexibility to temporary closure and event programming on Indiana between Main and Broadway, that's one of the things that drew me back into downtown, is the great programming in downtown. Would love to continue seeing the support for that. Taking the long view, we really appreciate Exhibit 6.1 in the RIC study, which is page 26 on that study, it shows accent paving areas on Indiana between Main and Broadway and Eucalyptus, which draw energy and attention into the adaptable public plazas, great low-cost investment for intentional activation. I provided a handout, which kind of supplements that exhibit from Engineering, and this handout, unfortunately, we don't have it on the screen, but it illustrates a little more detail, the section of the Buena Vista Creek that could be capped to create a park system, adding on to the existing Veterans Memorial Park, the section from South Santa Fe to Indiana turns into a half-acre urban park, the second section from Indiana to Citrus is another 19,000 square feet of potential green space. Unlike increasing the valuable but generic commodity of parking that most won't even notice, adding a three-quarter acre park in downtown would set Vista apart from every other downtown in North County and the region, getting a lot of attention and elevating it as a destination. That area of the Buena Vista Creek right now is a gap that has been an area of concern and safety. Thank you very much. Now, Epi.
Councilmembers and staff, I'm not as well-versed as the previous speaker, Mr. Leffson, the one thing that I do want to concur is, the one-way streets are the ones that I am most concerned with. The other would be to address the landscaping with the tree canopies, that not only do we want to address having people from Vista enjoy this, we would like to extend that invitation to other cities to come, and I think we can address most of those problem situations with the tree canopy. As Karina will tell you, I'm a proponent of jacarandas, the one thing that we can work with is the jacarandas, is that it's temporal, it's seasonal, it is a time when they bloom, when we can capitalize on more people coming to Vista, only because of the blooming of the trees. It is, and they bloom during June and July, when most people get married, I think it would try to make it a destination for a lot of people to come to this area, if we can address that issue. Mostly, I am mostly concerned with the commerce and bringing people to Vista, not just the residents of Vista, so, congratulations on all the work that you have all done, and I think it's a wonderful thing. John, thank you for your interest, John, thank you for your interest too, and of course, all the other members in the council, thank you.
Okay, I think that's the end of our public speakers, so we'll close the opportunity for public comment, we'll hear from, again, from Councilmember Contreras.
Fantastic, I appreciate the, the public comment, and I really appreciate all my colleagues here for providing the opportunity and some funding, so that we could do a traffic analysis, you know, the information and the recommendations before you are based on actual traffic analysis, and looking at how we could increase parking, that's the number-one thing that we're hearing in the downtown, we need to increase parking, and, you know, building a parking structure is a little expensive, it's probably, I don't know, maybe $100,000 per parking spot at this point, so, not super feasible, however, I, I also want to say thank you so much to all the committee members, because you really gave a lot of time and dedication, and it's not easy to come to consensus, and we even had more folks in the public come, and we tried to do consensus with everybody, right, beyond even just the, the committee members, and so, there was a lot of thought, and a lot of going through different models and scenarios to come up with some of the recommendations before you. I think they're wonderful, it, it is a long-term project, and we know that our downtown needs to continue to be enhanced, that businesses in our downtown can't survive on just having, you know, a good Friday and a good Saturday. And, you know, one of the things that I hear, not only from folks here in Vista, but folks that are visiting, is just how wonderful our downtown and magical it is, but they're always looking for a few more amenities, is there a place that I could sit under some shade, is there a drinking fountain, or, you know what, I have my kids with me, and, you know, I'm meeting up with another parent that has their child, and maybe we want to sit, you know, somewhere where someone can get food from Burger Bents, and the other person can get food from Belching Beaver, and then, they, there could be like this wonderful plaza area, and so, I've heard that for a long time, and earlier, when I was on council, we did have a design before us, and it just was not very good. So, thank you again to the committee members, because I think, you know, through this process of building consensus, of taking in a lot of concerns and, and, you know, criticisms, we came to, I think, a really good unified vision of what we want to see in the downtown. I would love to hear- I would love to hear from the rest of my council what their thoughts are. I know there's a lot before us, and there's different ways that we can move forward with some, if not all, the recommendations. And also understanding that there won't be funding for all the recommendations, even if we were to say, "Let's move this forward," which is why it's really important to look at that short-term, midterm, and long-term goal. So I'll go ahead and just kick it over to my council members. I'd love to hear what you have to say.
Deputy Mayor Melendez.
Wow, thank you so much for this discussion. It's been many, many meetings that I'm sure the Downtown Committee has had. We initiated this process some time ago, and now we get to review all your hard work. And I want to say that I really think that we did this process the right way. We had a multi-department, really inclusive team working on this. So I just want to say thank you to all the members of the Downtown Committee. And one of the things that really stands out for me is that this is multi-department with the city of Vista. We have community development, we have traffic engineering, we have economic development, and many, many more, right? Stakeholders, right, within the city that are using all of our expertise here and our wonderful staff to find the solutions, right? Solutions for, you know, really common problems. Like, you know, what happens when the kiddos are getting burnt out and, you know, we're finishing up lunch and we need to get to a water fountain and we need a place to sit? What about, you know, that rendezvous spot where a couple of friends are meeting up after work, and they haven't decided exactly where they're gonna go eat yet, but maybe someone wants some food from one business and someone wants food from another business, and there's a common meeting area? There's also the concern about how do we even get more people to come into our downtown, right? What does it look like? What are the amenities? How easy it is to circulate, right? Do you easily flow through? Right now, our downtown feels a little bit disjointed. So I think some of the solutions that the committee has come up with in terms of circulation are really exciting. If we can gain 55 parking spots, that's an exciting improvement. But I will just, you know, speak to the facts. And the study that we did showed that there's a significant vacancy in our parking spots at this time, right? So maybe the ideal parking spots are always in high demand, right? Those ones right in front of your favorite brewery. But for me, seeing that there's, you know, a way that we can get ahead of the parking problems, right, and add more spots, that's definitely to our advantage. And then tree coverage too, right? Keeping everything cool in our downtown. So I really want to speak to the elements of this plan, right, that I want to say yes to. That's things like wayfinding, the seating areas, art opportunities, bicycle racks, new trees, accent paving areas, right? Creating a little bit more of those buffer zones for pedestrians so it's a little bit more walkable. We know that cities that are walkable have higher economic support, right? More patronage, more people are walking through the door. We also had some suggestions of creating even more trails and connectivity. So there's a lot here that I would support, and I think it's really important to note that we would have to phase this in. Looking at all the work that the committee did to create, you know, short, midterm, and long-term goals is very helpful. Thank you for doing that work. Thank you, Councilmember Contreras, for spearheading this process. You know, to me, this is wonderful. This is so wonderful for us to enhance our downtown. I agree with the short-term goals, that we need to improve circulation. People are getting rides to downtown, right? This is a place where people are maybe getting some alcoholic beverages, right? We need to be able to create more space for people to use Rideshare, because that's also a safety imperative. We want people to be drinking responsibly, and that means getting an Uber. So that is going to be a high priority for me as well. And then landscaping, as, you know, it's cooling down right now, but as soon as we get into April May, it becomes unbearable. And we want people to linger in our downtown. We want people to be able to enjoy themselves, right? Spend all day, go into all of the shops, right? And that's how I like to spend my time. I spend a lot of time in our downtown, right? And maybe I want to get a smoothie over at Milk. Maybe I want to meet up with some friends at a brewery. Maybe I want to get some dinner at Shacks, right? There's so many different places for us to linger in our downtown and spend more time there. So we want to build it for us, for our community, that lives and works and enjoys and spends our hard-earned money in downtown. But we also want to build for people who are visiting, and we want to create a hospitable environment as well. So that's where I think the wayfinding is going to be really cool. But if we can be assured that we're building something that our local businesses stand by, that's going to be a really big deal. And whenever we're doing any type of public planning like this, there's always going to be disagreements, right? There might be differences of opinions. And building consensus is going to be really important for us. And from, you know, my understanding, the plan that was developed, the procedure that we went through with this very well-thought-out and inclusive committee, we were able to, you know, despite there being such a variety of businesses involved, right? It wasn't just restaurants, right? It was, you know, members who have a lot of different business operations in Vista. We have a retail, we have property owners, we have residents, we have, you know, even Sharon from the Historical Society thinks that's really important. You know, we want to be able to preserve what we have. I grew up here in Vista, and I appreciate everybody's unique perspectives. And thank you, Monica, for speaking as well. I don't know if you remember me, but when I was 15, I had my first job at your consignment store. And hello, Cameron. Thank you both for being here. I really think that some of the ways that we can help businesses like yours that are offering, you know, creative spaces for people, and is to have a more creative economy, to bring more people into our downtown, to give people more of an opportunity to see the great stuff that you have, because I know that I've always really enjoyed the spaces that you create. And it's so hard when some of our businesses, that, you know, we just aren't getting the foot traffic that we want, and we're not, you know, really, you know, getting the volumes of people into our downtown like, you know, maybe downtown Carlsbad is getting, or downtown San Marcos is getting. So we have to compete with those other cities, and we want to be able to work with what we have. And I think some of the elements that are described in this plan are really going to enhance our downtown and make it safer, make it more accessible, but also make it more vibrant, make it more exciting, make it more alluring to patrons that are walking through the door. So I support these committee recommendations. And I would love to be briefed and work with staff on, okay, what are the next phases? Where do you need support? Where do we need, you know, that first, you know, rung of funding to get some of these initiatives started? Because we can build to that downtown that we believe in, that we know is going to deliver for all of us, to make sure that we all have the opportunities that we're looking for. So thank you so much for even having this discussion. I can't even imagine, there's like so many meetings on this. You guys were talking about this for, you know, nights after nights, and that's a lot of work. And so there's so many details in here. If I could, I would go on forever, but I think I've expressed the general elements that I support. And let's see what other yeses we have on the council for this plan. Thanks so much.
Councilmember O'Donnell.
My microphone is so slow tonight, so I apologize. Councilmember Contreras, thank you very much for working on this, and to all the individuals that worked on this from our business community and our just community in general. This is absolutely awesome to me. I looked at, you know, at first, I was concerned about expanding the gazebo and losing parking spaces, and I see the concept, which I know Mr. Woods has been a huge proponent of turning one-ways and creating parking for a long time. So I'm guessing that's where the idea came from. But, you know, I was, my wife and I go downtown with our kids all the time, and when I saw the renderings for this gazebo, the first thing I thought, you know, you go to Peppery, you go to Handel's, you take your kid, you can go sit on a bench and eat ice cream, or you can go get food and go sit in this area. I would highly suggest we don't use Adirondack chairs in this space, but, you know, we'll get there when we get there. I love the idea of plaques to fundraise as well. I know that that's been a concept that's been used in multiple locations in different areas. I think it's a good way to raise funds, especially to contribute to that. I also, one of the things I love is that it keeps the historic feel of the space in downtown. It doesn't change the concept, it doesn't change the character. It just, it creates a space for our community to enjoy and just go there and patron our businesses. And the other thing I love, I mean, downtown, you know, anybody that thinks that there aren't parking issues, I know that there are times when it's not. Like, I've been down there at 11:30 on a Tuesday, and you can't find a spot to park. I mean, things are happening in downtown Vista, and there are ideas from other business owners that will even just make it that much grander and better for the city. So the work that has gone into this, I'm genuinely grateful for. It is really, really well thought out, really well detailed. I look forward to seeing what happens. I understand the concern over a one-way street, but I think the additional parking should be able to offset people being unable to find a parking spot. Because also, to the point that was made, I mean, a raised parking structure is extremely expensive. It's probably as close to $100,000 a spot once you start looking at those. So, I mean, I just, you know, good work on this. Yeah, I'm a yes. I support it. I think it's great. Great job by staff. Joe and Sam, thank you for the presentation. I look forward to see where this goes, you know? It's really, really exciting to see what's happening in our city, and I think that this is just going to be one more thing that makes Vista a destination. The only other thing I wanted to say, you know, just the other day, when my wife and I were walking with our kids, I'm walking down Main Street, and it almost took me back in time. And I don't know why I've never really appreciated or noticed it as much, just because I think I'm down there so much, you know, really, but like, I just took a step back. And if you've ever been to the Midwest and you go to a state like Michigan, or Indiana, or Wisconsin, and you see these old historic towns, it just takes you back to this like pure Americana of a time that is so far past us. And when you walk down Main Street, you really do feel that. And so I'm glad to see that we're keeping that concept while beautifying the area. So, I mean, that's all I'm gonna say. I mean, I could, same thing, I could talk on it all night, but just great work overall by all those that worked on this, and I really appreciate it. I'm looking forward to seeing what comes forward.
Councilmember Fox.
Yeah, the lag, it's funny, I pushed it, and it didn't work, so I pushed it again. I was like, "It's gonna mute me, I know it." Sure enough. I also want to echo my thanks to Councilmember Contreras for hosting this. I went to a couple of the first meetings, and I could see that there was a lot of really good work, like, being done there. And a lot of the members were, like, I think, had some really good ideas. And I think, and I think we sat at the table when we were talking about the one-way streets, and he had some really, really funny input on that. That was fantastic. So I personally, I mean, I like a lot of this plan. I'm sure there are ways we can improve it, and that's stuff that we can do over time. Is, tonight, if, based off of our direction, I mean, this wouldn't preclude us from doing something like hosting a town hall on this specific plan with some of these downtown business owners like Mosaic, and making sure that we're able to potentially mitigate some of those potential issues?
Nothing precludes that.
Okay, because that'd be something I'd be happy to do. And maybe the Chamber of Commerce would be, you know, would be interested in partnering on it, and making sure that those downtown businesses don't get passed over and forgotten, and that, you know, they're some of the main stakeholders in this. So I want to make sure that we take care of them, and we don't, you know, that nothing, there's as little adverse effects as possible. And in fact, we want it to be a boon, not a bane. So, okay. It looks like it's about a 20% increase in parking spots almost immediately, which is pretty cool. And not only that, they're prime parking spots. It's the ones that are desirable right in front of the businesses, which, you know, sounds like, it's not like we're adding a parking lot that's a half a mile away and saying we just added parking. It's, no, these are like front-row center spots, which is actually a really, a really big deal. I'd be curious to see how, you know, we can, and we don't have to talk about this now, but like, the ways to mitigate, you know, when we're doing some of the one-ways on tearing up streets and making sure there's as little impact as possible to those businesses. And again, this is something, I, my business is in downtown Vista. I used to live in downtown Vista at the Ryland for a little while, so, you know, I spent a lot of time down there. And so I'm really excited to see what, you know, what happens down there. And, you know, the excitement of having these things, these big changes and these big, you know, improvements in areas can be, depending on how you, you know, market and how you capitalize on it, can be a huge thing for the city. So, so thank you again to all the committee members, everyone who took their time and made sure to, kept coming out. I know that you had six-plus meetings or something, I don't know if it was, you know, and voiced your opinions. I think there was, I'm really impressed with what came out of it. And, oh, yeah, the covered parking on, or shade on the parking lot on Citrus and Broadway, I just, this summer, we did the Rhythm and Brews Festival again, and it was hot. Like, we hosted the beer festival in that parking lot in July, I think it was. And so, yeah, I could see the need for that. I didn't even think about that, and that's a very interesting one. So, I mean, I love the concept. Would be happy to, you know, get into further detail, you know, with the community, with some potential town halls, make sure that we, you know, are doing things the right way, and that we are doing things in a fiscally responsible way and, you know, able to get this stuff done. So, thank you.
Councilmember Contreras.
Well, thank you. It sounds like the council is relatively supportive of the committee, Downtown Committee's recommendations. And I would say, that's exactly something that I wrote down, that we do, a public awareness of this, and that we host it at the AVO. I mean, we had our, some of our committee meetings at the AVO, and it was the first, every single time, it was the first time someone had been there, which is super cool. And I'm seeing the AVO more and more being utilized, which is amazing, which is, you know, thanks to the changes here on the council and the discussions we've had. But I really do think that we should invite all businesses and residents within a 500-foot radius of the historic downtown, and pick a day where we can go through a presentation from our city staff, that, where we can also take questions from business owners and from residents, and more feedback. I think, you know, there's, this is, this plan has so many different aspects that it is 100% going to be needing a lot more discussion, right? And more feedback from the community. But I think as it stands, because I'm hearing a lot of consensus, I will go ahead and make a motion to move the recommendations of the committee, so that way staff can actually come back with the final review, and we can get some more, you know, we need cost estimates, we need to figure out how to piece this together. And I would add that we notify, like I said, businesses and residents within a 500-foot area, and plan a community workshop to go through this information. Also, you know, it may be a good idea, too, to have a separate webpage on our city website dedicated to this downtown conceptual plan, where people can also, you know, submit comments, recommendations, suggestions, support, opposition, whatever the case might be. And, yeah, I just, I'm very excited. I think it's not every single day that we get to have this type of stakeholder engagement and collaboration, and bringing forward ideas that were kind of lost in the ether a long time ago, but they're still really good ideas, and then bringing in these new ideas. And I hear you too, Councilmember Fox, with the Rhythm and Brews. I was there, I was like, everybody was just trying to get where there was shade. And so this is one of the things that I wanted to talk to my committee members in the Downtown Committee, because I think that, you know, with that city-owned parking lot, there are so many opportunities to do even more events, but the shade is a critical factor for those daytime events. And then looking at the gazebo redo, it's just really incredible, and we can get down to details with these different elements there. But first and foremost, it's a place to gather for the community and to have different vendors and other artistic expression, whether it's a band, right? We see more and more activity. whether it's a band, right? We see more and more activity from small businesses that wanna, you know, show folks their products and whatnot. So, we can accommodate that with a public square, and do a really fantastic job with it. It's gonna take time, it's gonna take funding, it's gonna take all of us begging and asking folks at higher levels of government to really join us in this vision for economic vitality and beautification in our downtown. And I think that we'll get to a place where potentially, we even see funding from, you know, different levels of government. But, outside of that, again, huge shout-out to our committee, fantastic work. I appreciate your time. I promised you it wouldn't be a waste of time, and we came out with an amazing product that is always going to be in the public record. So regardless of who is sitting up here, you can keep pointing to whatever council and tell them to hurry up and get this plan done. So, and that's all, that's all from me. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Donnell.
I will second the motion. The only question I had, so I see, I see on the last, what, third, third from the last page, that the totals are on there for the Vista Parking Circulation Gazebo Parking Lot in the, in the staff packet. You don't need to flip to it, I'm not gonna ask any specifics on it. I was just curious if we have an idea on a rough cost of the creek bed and turning it into walking path?
That was not included in this cost.
I know, that's, that's why I asked.
I'll bet Lev Gershman has a good idea what that costs.
Lev, what do you, what do you think that would cost? Three to four? That's not as bad as I thought.
We're probably more like five, if you're looking at a publicly constructed project.
I was thinking more like, I was thinking more like 15, but, yeah, alright, no, but yeah, I'm happy to second it. And even looking at the cost totals, like, not that $10 million isn't a lot of money, but relative to what would take place in this area, it's less than I thought it would be, so. Good work again, but yeah, that's my second.
Deputy Mayor Melendez.
Thank you. I'm excited to vote on this, and I'm most excited about the town square design of the gazebo. And for the public record, I just wanted to put a recommendation in that I didn't see on any of the renderings. And this is something I've seen in Escondido and their downtown. They have really delightful, beautiful twinkle lights. And so, you can't forget about lighting and how that sets the vibe, so I'm just gonna put it in the record now. Hopefully, we can get all those bells and whistles down the line. Thanks.
Councilmember Contreras. Mr. Conley, did you have something?
I just wanted to clarify the motion. We're gonna hold the town hall at the AVO with the public notice, and then we'll come back to council after that. Is that the intent?
So, I would say we move this forward, right, and we let the community know that this is what's on the table, and then you're gonna bring back some SEQA analysis and recommendations and CIP. And, but I think concurrently, we have a meeting with the public, and we do the 500-foot notice, and just have a big celebration at the AVO and take in feedback, criticisms. You know, I had the opportunity to speak with a lot of different folks, and, and there were concerns, you know? And so, having those conversations and trying to address those concerns, but does that clarify? And also, we're looking at, you know, alternative three.
Yes, so we'll, we'll bring it back to council with the SEQA and the CIP recommendations, and we can do a town hall following that.
Yes, that's perfect, yeah. Awesome.
I suppose of the, the drawings here, I, I like 4-3 the best. I noticed we didn't, did we include the, the gazebo in the, the gazebo rehab and the net parking spaces there? In, in all of these, or?
It was not, so the gazebo roughly, I mean, based on the concept, is 26 parking spaces.
And has this consumed that whole area, or how many did we lose?
No, eight would be restored on the south end of the gazebo, at the alley. So, it'd be in that loss of 18 parking spaces in the gazebo.
Okay.
Like, they're just based on the concept.
Gotcha. And how many, how many parking spaces, we didn't, I wish we would have illustrated our new lot in Michigan here, because we're getting, how many? Was it like 54?
26.
26? 28?
28.
28, okay. I, I, you know, I don't love going one way, I know none of us do. I, I don't know where the $10 million is coming from. We, we're think- No, 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 I, I, I understand where the cost estimate's coming from. I, I don't know where the money's coming from to pay for it. Yeah, yeah. Terry's got an idea where we're gonna get the 10 million. I, I'm just not sure how we're gonna fund it. But, we do need more parking down there, you know? We've been going down to Seven Seas, and we're always hunting a little bit for a parking space, so. You know, and every night of the week, it seems like we're having these issues. I really like the, the wishing well walk idea. I like that a lot. We could get some developer contributions, and maybe use some park development funds to build that park. That could be really nice. It turned a, an underutilized piece of real estate into one that would be a community benefit, so. Yeah, I, I want to say thank you to all the members of the committee. Appreciate all your hard work and time away from your businesses and your families, and late nights out. Thank you very much for all your diligence in serving the community in that way. Appreciate it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Thank you again for your hard work. That's gonna bring us to our final discussion item tomorrow, tonight, regarding movable tiny homes. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raise your hand feature, by pressing star nine, or submitting a request to speak card. Speakers will be called upon after the presentation. Deputy Mayor Melendez asked for this item to be on the agenda, so we'll ask her to introduce it.
Wonderful, thank you. We have just, hopefully, a brief discussion, very preliminary discussion, about a concept that was introduced to me by a resident of District 3. As you all know, we have ADUs that are regulated within the city of Vista, that's accessory dwelling units. And those have to be a specific size and setback from the primary property, and there's state regulations with that as well. This concept is similar, but in speaking with our city attorney, it might be something that is an even entirely new development code that we would create. So, there seems to be an appetite from the community, right, whether it's folks that are looking for a little bit more residential space in their property, folks that are wanting to accommodate aging parents. And there are some really thoughtful designs for movable tiny homes. And these are not the same as RVs, and in fact, the city of San Diego and the county of San Diego, they do have some recommended regulations for these. So, right now, if a resident wanted to enhance their property, you know, build for a family member, and just enhance the residential use of their property in general, there would be no pathway for them to do that. We don't have it within our code to allow them to do that. And so, we do have a, a subject matter expert here with us, Ellen Stone. She's here to share a little bit of information if we have any questions. Maybe you can join us just for a quick hello. And unfortunately, the constituent who had brought this to my attention wasn't available for this meeting, but I'm really happy to have you here, Ellen. And, and please, why don't you introduce yourself and share a little bit about this concept?
Sure. Is this working? So, thank you so much for having me here. I'm Ellen Stone. I am the first person to permit movable tiny house in the region, down in San Diego. Yay! It only took three years. But, I, I also have spent at least seven, eight, oh, no, nine years now working to see how we can utilize this type of housing for affordable housing. And there's a number of things that can be done with movable tiny homes that can't be done with any other type of housing that we have at our, you know, ability within the legal framework here, so. Happy to speak to any questions, or if-
And just to help us in the discussion, in our exploration of this new concept, what makes a movable tiny home different from an RV?
So, the movable tiny house is built just like a traditional house, two-by-fours, you know, the, the construction is just like a standard home. An RV is meant for recreation, and is therefore, has much lower standards for the materials that are used, and, you know, they're more concerned with weight, and so, like, you know, you're minimizing the, the long-term kind of benefit with an RV, because it's only being used for recreation. So, the movable tiny house, built just like any other house, which means it's available if you take care of it. You know, you could have a house, you know, being able to be in good working order up to health and safety codes for many, many decades.
Thank you. And aesthetically as well, right? These are much more attractive. They're very cute. And you've seen yourself personally, and in your advocacy, that there's definitely a demand and a benefit to this type of housing, just being available and being an option. So, I really appreciate you being here, and helping us, you know, understand this. And I welcome you to sit down. We also have Joe Vaca with our Community Development Department, who might have had some thoughts about what ways the city of Vista would want to regulate this type of structure. We don't have to adopt what the city of San Diego did necessarily, but that is a, a framework that we can include, that was included on the packet. And in general, we can just understand that these structures are gonna be smaller than a traditional ADU, and may in fact, take the place of an ADU, so it is a smaller scale. And that might be of interest to the council, who, you know, some of our neighbors are concerned about the large scale of some of these ADUs. So, in the San Diego Development Services Department, they outlined that, you know, here's some items that it would not be larger than allowed by California state law for movement on public highways. So, it is meant to be moved, but it is a longstanding structure. It's not to exceed one story, not be able to move under its own power. Shall have a floor area that's between 150 and 430 square feet. Shall not have a separate address from the primary dwelling unit. Only one companion unit or movable tiny house and one junior unit are permitted on a premise. A companion unit, junior unit or movable tiny house shall not be used for a rental term of less than 30 consecutive days. And accessory dwelling units, including dwelling units as defined as companion units, junior units. Movable tiny homes or guest quarters are exempt from DIF impact fees. There's also many specifications on location, you know, in relation to the primary residence. And those regulations are all very important, because we want to make it clear to members of the public who hope to develop these structures, very clearly what is expected of them. That relates to setbacks from the primary property, as well as brush management. There's a number of building standards. There's relation to fire hazards, and design elements, parking and otherwise. So, we can customize this for Vista, but it's a gap in our municipal code, right? We're always modernizing. And for our residents who might want to create this type of accommodation, can we give them a reasonable, regulated pathway to work with our building department to make their, their dream a reality? So, I really do think that these types of opportunities really align with our values related to defending property rights, and ensuring that every resident can live out their dream and create their dream home. And a lot of times, that includes, you know, if you have a little bit of extra space on your land, being able to expand in a, a structure such as this, which can be quite, quite lovely, and also very accommodating for someone's needs. So, with that, I don't know if we have any public comments. Do we have any public comments on this item? Okay, we'd love to hear from the public on this item, and then I'll turn it over to my council to just get your preliminary thoughts. Thank you so much.
We have Bill Kavanaugh that would like to be heard. I have three minutes. Mr. Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Bill Kavanaugh. I'm a general contractor, manufactured home dealer, been working in the prefabricated housing industry for about 20 years. Built several homes, ADUs, prefabricated, site-built in Vista. And I have to compliment the city of Vista, your building department, engineering, public works, by far, one of the best. And I work all over Southern California, so I applaud them. Tiny homes are a component of what we do. They're not the be-all, end-all, and when people look at the cost structure of a tiny home, and they walk in a tiny home, their first comment is, "It's pretty tiny." "It's a tiny space." The benefits of building with a tiny home are cost and timeline. We can build these significantly less cost, because I don't have to do the same foundation system as a traditional ADU, or even with a manufactured home. We do a lot of manufactured homes as ADUs. They're still gonna have the cost of bringing utilities out to the, of this tiny home. The nice thing about these is because they're gonna have their smaller footprint, their electrical usage is gonna be less, so most likely, we're gonna be able to pull off the existing electric meter. A sewer in City of Vista shouldn't be a problem. When you get into the county, and now septic, that's gonna be something you're gonna have to deal with, or they're gonna have to deal with, whether or not that's an additional bedroom. That, it sounds like you already have the city of San Diego, but the city of LA has a nice, I've got some copies, I can leave there with you. City of LA, city of San Diego, county of LA, city of Riverside, and that's, not the county of LA, county of San Diego, city of Riverside, in Southern California, all allow tiny homes. I like the city of LA's standards better, because they do two things that I think are gonna keep the cost down. One is they don't require fire sprinklers. City of San Diego and the county of San Diego require fire sprinklers, which most tiny homes don't build, aren't built with fire sprinklers, because they're movable, so you don't need a fire sprinkler typically. And, most everybody I'm seeing now is required that you put these on a paved or a concrete surface, which again, is unnecessary, because in mobile home parks, or when we're setting a manufactured home, we'll do, we can set it on road base, six inches of road base, which is gonna further drive the cost. I actually like road base better, because if you get water under there, it doesn't sit, it's gonna drain. So, those are two requirements that I, if you're gonna consider this, don't require the paved or concrete is mandatory, and fire sprinklers are unnecessary. So, I, I can leave this with somebody, and my number's on there. If I can be of assistance at any time, I'd be right in the area. I build in the area, so I'd be glad to help anything I can do. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, I just gotta ask a question. How, with the building code, do we prevent? How do we, I mean, these four that you showed look beautiful. I love to watch that show, Tiny House Nation. Anybody else like to watch that? It's interesting, and, you know, maybe in a, a different time in my life, I, I would have been a customer for one of those. But I'm, I'm concerned, I mean, we have a lot of RVs here in the city that are parked illegally, people living illegally. I mean, if I wanna go out and get some CDX and slap it up on my tree, I mean, honestly, you know, if I buy a beautiful one from you, great. But what if I wanna nail my own together? How are we gonna write the standards such that, you know?
I think Ellen can address that.
Okay, I'd love to hear that.
Yeah, so, it's a really important part of onboarding.
Yeah, so it's a really important part of onboarding this housing type. So one of the ways that you can ensure that it's properly built is by requiring third-party certification, which there are a number of state-level third-party certifiers that already exist. And that's something that the city of LA that you, that you heard about uses and requires city of San Diego as well, county. And then you also have design standards. So one of the ways that you can very quickly rule out RVs is a pitched roof. So RVs are flat, have a flat roof. Pitched roof automatically rules that out. There's, there's also requirements with double-pane windows and insulation and some other design features that you just write in. And you'll see with info bulletin 403 through the city of San Diego, that, that they do that in their design standards. So that's, that's how some of the other jurisdictions have dealt with that.
You know, I, I think I could, I think I could go with this on a certain size lot, like a one acre. But if we're going to let people pull these in on a R1B 6,000-foot lot, I don't know if I could go for that. What is, what's the standard that you're recommending for the, is, or are?
I'm open to that feedback or your recommendations or if you've seen successful lot sizes that are compatible, what would you recommend?
Yeah, one thing, I wouldn't limit the size because of the possibility that this becomes a more affordable way for a homeowner to do an ADU. So if, if you allow it on the same sized lots as an ADU, you then, one thing we didn't speak to or that I didn't speak to before is that you're looking at about a third of the cost of traditional ADU construction. And you can even make that, reduce that with some, some other ways of structuring the build. So if, if you limit it to larger, you know, lots, you would limit a good number of, of properties, especially those that, you know, people who don't have a lot of extra income or even room in their, you know, to take on extra debt.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much for your input. I, I'm not a no forever, but I am a no right now on this. I, I don't want to see a proliferation of these kinds of dwelling units that would increase population density, that would be exempt from development impact fees. You know, everybody wants parks, everybody wants schools. How do we pay for those things? Well, the development impact fees that housing pays is a tax on housing that pays for those things. It's exactly how we pay for schools and parks and for new sewer. It's exactly how we pay for sewer capacity. We make people that build homes pay for sewer capacity. We make them build the infrastructure. When you flush the toilet, it carries it to, it's seen a wastewater authority to be treated. How do we get the sewage from point A to point B without the impact fees? You know, somebody asked me a long time ago when I was a new councilman, they said, do you work for the children that live in Vista or do you work for the children that might live in Vista in the future? And I said, well, that's easy. I work for the kids that live in Vista. I work for the families that live here today. My obligation is to them. And so does bringing greater density without the tax base, without the impact fees to, to carry the freight for the infrastructure for them, which would basically diminish the number of dollars available to serve our current residents. You know, we're, we're a city with 25% lower average median income, area median income rather, than the rest of the county. So by comparison, we're a little poorer than a lot of our neighbors in the county. So my concern is, you know, we've already lowered development impact fees or waived them substantially for some ADUs. This creates a potential for proliferation. By the way, I thought, you know, the one, two and three were very nice looking. And then there was the one that was sort of a budget design. You know, if you can get it certified, you know, who, who knows what's going to, so I got to have a pitch with me night. There's ways to, to get around these standards. You know, somebody's going to offer a lower price unit that's still certified. I'm not against it everywhere. I think there's places where if people have more room, it could work. But to let somebody do it on a 6,000-square-foot lot, you know, crane it over the house into the backyard in a very small community and now everybody's got people living in the backyard, I just need to see a lot more to this and a lot of limitations and a lot of satisfying concerns. But again, I love the tiny houses. I think they're cool. You know, I wouldn't mind spending the weekend in one, you know? I mean, I, I think they're, they really look cool. I love watching them on TV, but I have serious concerns about how this would affect our community. And so for that reason, right now, I just not all the way there yet until I hear how we're going to quell some of those concerns. Councilmember Contreras.
Well, I think for some of the reasons that you said, I'm actually a yes because, you know, I, I see folks in my neighborhood where they don't have habitable structures that they're currently living in. And this is a great way to be able to increase someone's standard of living and the quality of the neighborhood as a whole by providing a different housing product that is much more accessible to a lot of folks. And I, I wouldn't want to limit it, just as we, you know, aren't able to limit the ADU. This would take the place of an ADU. So I really, I don't see the issue. And I think currently ADUs that are 750 square feet or less, we can't charge development impact fees on those already. So this by nature would be within that, I would, I would imagine that category since it is being, it's kind of a one-for-one, right? With an ADU, it's swappable. So I, I think, listen, a lot of folks are not able to find a place to live. We've had that conversation in this council for years and years and years and understanding that, you know, for us, it's difficult to build the amount of units that we need to that are affordable and deed restricted. However, if we open it up to market fundamentals, we can see that for some folks, this is a market-based solution for them to actually be housed. And this is, you know, I have several streams of income and this is probably the closest I'll ever be able to have a house in the near term, to be honest with you. So I, I wouldn't want to prohibit someone like myself, you know, to be able to have a really cool-looking tiny home. And I think this is something that really could enhance the community in a positive way. So I'm a yes. I want to, you know, provide direction to staff that they investigate this more, take into consideration some of the cities that were cited that have different development codes. Look at this third-party certification, write the design standards. Interesting about the fire sprinkler and, you know, how to put the structure, if it needs to be, you have like a foundation or not. I, I would just love to hear more from our city staff as they investigate and bring back to council some recommendations. And this could be, you know, a longer process. It could take us, you know, two to three meetings to really hone in on how we want to move forward with this. But I think if we want to be realistic and honest about the problem that we have with folks not being able to afford to live, whether that's grocery prices or the cost of a home, cost of rent. I mean, we're looking here in Vista, you look at a studio, it's like $2,000 a month. I mean, it's incredibly expensive. So we have to be realistic and we have to be amendable to different strategies that would allow the market to create opportunities for folks that if they were just in a different city, they would have those opportunities. And I would hate for something like a boundary to reduce the, the ability for folks to pursue their own happiness and freedom. So I, I think we should be the city that is an example of how we create more options for folks to be housed. So that's, that's all from me at this point.
Councilmember Fox.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I think that there's, I don't really see this being a huge issue in somewhere like District Two. Like I, I know there's a lot of people that I know personally that have people living in RVs on their property that I'm not going to talk about, but already. And so, you know, this would be like, you know, maybe a way for them to get right with the law, if you know what I mean? So I don't think it would be too out of character for that, but I could, I could see there being some issues with areas, you know, in, in Shadow Ridge, you know, a bunch of really like planned community, kind of small backyards with, with tiny homes kind of crammed in the back. And I could see that kind of being a concern from, from, from the community. So I guess one question I would have is, you know, what limitations would be legally be able to put on something? Would be, would be be able to do things like lot size? Would we be able to do things like setbacks? I know a lot of that is in this current one. My only concern is, I know that with the, with California state law surrounding ADUs, I don't know if there's any concern of the legal ramifications of this, of, of, you know, us turning down one for a reason and then going, you know, getting sued and whether we'd actually have any standing in court if, you know, one was in a front yard or something like that against our ordinance, would that stand up in court? So just because of some of the California state ADU laws that are out there. So, I mean, I'm, I'm supportive of bringing this forward and addressing some of that, but I would like to have some of that included in, you know, whatever comes back is, is there some legal issues that we might be jumping into that we might not be thinking about? Because I did see things in here like, like lots or setbacks and right-of-way space and, and things like that that could be a similar thing to lot size, right? As long as they've got the setbacks on all the sides, the lot is big enough to, to, to house it. So I think that's, that kind of, kind of goes to that. Another interesting point is, I believe, just I, I did call some people about that were, that were knowledgeable about this, the ADU subject, just to kind of see if, like what the pros and cons were. And one thing is, they would be considered personal property, so they would not necessarily be in the appraisal of the, of the value of the home, like because it's personal property that you're supposed to take with you when you leave. And so that might be an interesting thing with a movable, that now that they have to figure out how to take that with them potentially and, and what that looks like. So just some interest there. And I was recommended to make sure that we require it, have, go through a state, state-approved, you know, certified manufacturers, things like that, that we get those types of certifications we require, so that we don't get some very weird structures that, you know, that someone just decides to build with pallets or something like that. That'd be a very punk rock, yeah. But yeah, so I mean, a lot of the concerns were already, were already, were already stated. So as long as we can find ways to mitigate those, I don't think it's necessarily a huge problem in District Two. But, you know, I could, I could see how, you know, in some places in the city, there might be some pushback. So I don't know if we are able to do it based off zoning, off of, you know, you know, certain areas, certain things like that or not, but I'd be curious in, in all of that when it comes back. So thanks.
There we go. Walter, I saw that you wanted to say something, so I'm going to ask you, yes, is it legal to do a zoning overlay for these items or for these tiny homes? Are they going to pose any legal issues as, would they be still in the same compliance with ADUs with the state of California?
So, you know, we've just done a cursory, so we'll be looking more in depth, but no, we would be able to control the zoning. So right now, ADUs are defined as permanent dwelling units. These by definition are temporary or movable, have to be movable. So right now, the state hasn't regulated this sector. So we do still have, I think, a lot of control over what we can do in this area. So, so with that, you know, until the state, if the state ever steps in, we might lose that, but right now, they're completely out of the definition of an ADU.
Give it time. So I'm not a no right, like I'm not, I'm not a super hard yes right now, but I'm also not a hard no. What I would want to do is have parameters for zoning overlay because there are a lot of planned communities in District Four. And I think that with the limited backyard space, even in mine, like if I could jam this back there and saw one in my neighbor's yard, it's not something I'd probably want to see wheeled back there. But there obviously is a housing crisis and this is one other thing we can utilize to tackle that. But those are concerns I have. I mean, how often can they be moved? I mean, can you just move them all over the property? Does it really matter? I mean, they, I mean, they have to be sitting on a slab. I don't know if you can answer that question or not and.
Typically, typically if, if you require that these units plug into utilities, then the placement of those utilities requires it to stay in that location. Does that make sense?
No, it makes plenty of sense, yeah. So.
And, and the site plan, if you're permitting them requiring permit, the site plan has to be approved. And so that, that outlines where it's being parked and where it's being set up.
So, so here's my next question, and you can probably better answer this than anybody up here at the moment. With the county, with, with LA, with other, like Riverside, have you seen a popularity growth in these or has it still been pretty slow and steady?
It's still slow. A lot of people don't know about it. So the, the folks that know about it generally don't, aren't able to afford property. So, so one of the things I like about this option is that you have some folks that don't have enough room in their debt portfolio, if you will, and they have just enough money to maybe put in those improvements to the property. So for example, with the property that I permitted, it was about $20,000 to hire the electrician and plumber and, and do some, we, we did have to pour concrete because that was something that was required by the city of San Diego. So all of those types of improvement costs. But you could then rent the space to someone who owns their own tiny home, which is really, I think, exciting because then you have a share of cost, where it was $100,000 for, for my husband and myself to do this for the site improvements and the unit. It would only be 80, or it would only be six, sorry, 20, I can do math. It would only be 20 if they wanted to rent that pad. So that's another kind of exciting opportunity that would exist.
So you're talking about renting a pad, right? And I see language in here that allows you to rent the actual.
So it could be like, yeah.
I'm going to be honest with you. I have a concern over becoming a rental because when you look in states like New York or the city of New York, as density grows, you're going to see now a 450-square-foot building essentially, and, and rent could be exorbitant if there's no other areas to go. And I would want, I would not want to see that. I'm, I'm painting the worst-case scenario.
Sure.
So I'm not, I'm not trying to doomsday. I'm just, but, but that would be a concern that I would have. And I don't know if you've seen that in other areas.
I, I haven't. In fact, usually it's about being more restrictive so that folks, so that it doesn't bite into any of the options that folks have. So this would just give individuals who would normally be renting at an RV park, if the RP, RV park recognized a movable tiny house, it would give them an alternate place to put their unit, potentially even more affordably. Because what's kind of crazy is that if you're paying per night somewhere, it actually can be pretty pricey over the course of a month.
Well, so I guess, I guess for my question that I'm, I'm more concerned about like a residential area, say I want to put one of these in my backyard and I know that there's no other housing available, so I'm going to spend, what's the average cost on these roughly?
So it can be anywhere between like 50 to as high as you want to go. So, it can be anywhere between, like, 50 to as high as you want to go.
So, I would want to make my return on that and then some, right? And so, that would just be a concern of mine. And I don't know if there's any language that we can use within any codes or municipal, whatever. But those are my off-the-back concerns. So, I'm sure that this is dialogue that can continue and we can shape a policy around this. So, like I said, I'm not a hard yes right now, but I'm also not a hard no. I just, yeah, I mean, I look forward to further discussion and see what we can have brought back to us.
Deputy Mayor.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for the discussion. Thank you, Ellen, for joining us and helping us navigate this new concept. And I think we can put it back to staff. I think from our comments, I'm going to turn to City Manager. I think we have consensus on at least discovering more and investigating where this fits within our municipal code and really what regulations, as expressed here tonight by the council, are going to be the best fit for Vista. I also am concerned when small rental units become, you know, an opportunity for just still higher and higher rents despite, you know, not a lot of an increase to that standard of living. We've seen that in other rental models in the city. So, if there's some way for us to regulate, you know, some sort of, you know, restriction on, you know, rentals that it's favorable, right? To, and is tenant-friendly, right? I think that that would be really helpful. But ultimately, all the feedback that I've heard tonight regarding the design, you know, ensuring that the plan is conducive to the surrounding area, that it's an appropriate setback so that it doesn't feel suffocating, that we're still, you know, we can still match our current infrastructure and amenities to that new development. I think all those are great considerations that really ultimately, you know, as our role is here, being able to regulate with our municipal code, giving people a pathway to achieve their dreams and pursue their happiness. And perhaps we have more stringent regulations than another city, right? It's really, it'll be an exercise for our council to explore that. But thank you to city staff for taking these recommendations tonight. Thank you to both of our speakers. And, you know, if the public is listening, you know, we're going to have more discussions about this. So, we really look forward to having those and thanks for taking the time to have this discussion.
Okay, that is going to bring us to council remarks. We'll start with staff, anything from the city clerk's office. City attorney, city manager.
The final Vista Fire Rescue Open House of the season is this Saturday at Fire Station Number 6 on East Vista Way. Families are invited to come out, meet the firefighters, paramedics, EMTs, and support staff, and enjoy live demonstrations, safety tips, snacks, and prizes. Halloween costumes are encouraged this weekend and there will be plenty of candy for everyone. Great opportunity to celebrate Fire Prevention Month, learn more about fire safety, and connect with our fire team. I also want to remind everyone that Dia de los Muertos exhibition is now open at the Civic Gallery right outside our Civic Center. Running through November 14th, this exhibition honors culture, memory, and community throughout, through beautiful and meaningful works of art. Especially encourage residents to join us for the artist reception on Monday, November 3rd, from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. We'll serve light refreshments right outside the council chambers here. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Fox.
Perfect. Just some upcoming events. We have November Fest presented by the Amigos de Vista Lions Club and Alta Vista Botanical Gardens on November 1st. It's from noon to 4 p.m. Tickets are $45 on Eventbrite. So, you're going to want to check that out. We have the Vista Made Showcase, a chamber event for entrepreneurs to showcase their products in the Morris B. Vance Community Room. It's a joint Chamber and City event, if I remember correctly. So, that's going to be a cool one. November 12th from 5 to 7 p.m. There's also on November 14th at Inzane Brewing in Main Street, we have a VFFA comedy night charity fundraiser and primo dinner. You can check that out. I'm sure it's on their social media. But tickets go $50 for a regular and $75 for a VIP. So, a lot of really cool things happening in the next couple of weeks in downtown and here in Vista. So, make sure you go and stop by. Also, stop by one of our wonderful, amazing Mexican restaurants for a wonderful Taco Tuesday tonight. And I love my wife, Mina, and I thank her for letting me serve. Thanks.
Councilmember O'Donnell.
You forgot about the fire open house at Fire Station 6 at 651 East Vista Way from 11 to 1. I know, I know, I just want to remind everybody. So, whoever, for all the people that worked on Fright Night, I just want to tell you what an awesome job you did. Every single person there I saw was just happy, having a great time. We got there right when it started. By the time we left, the streets were just packed. I mean, every year, it gets bigger and bigger. Everybody compliments it. They all love it. So, I just want to give my hats off to you for doing that, as well as those that worked on trunk-or-treat. That was a big success as well, which was on Sunday. So, just great job on all of that. For the item that was removed, I just want to thank the speakers that, or the individuals that reached out to us on the council. Have a safe and happy Halloween. And as always, I thank my wife for being, allowing me to serve on this body. I love her very much. I'll be home early tonight, but I hope you all have a great night. And I'm glad we're getting out of here before 9 o'clock.
Councilmember Contreras.
Awesome. For those who want to join a trash pickup, again, it is every Wednesday with Guerreras en Acción por un Vista Limpio. This is their sixth year doing it every single Wednesday. And if you want to connect with them, they pick up trash in District 1 around Luzduran Park. You can always reach out to Jovita Serafin. And if you have a hard time connecting with them, you can just reach out to me and I'll connect you. Outside of that, I can't remember if I informed the council last time, but at NCTD, we were having a discussion with the state and there is the possibility of an MOU to try out some hydrogen trains that the state has on the low-sand corridor. So, that's the coaster corridor. So, when that MOU comes forward, I will let you know. But it's pretty exciting if this goes through. And they're also going to pay for the fuel costs during the pilot, which was a big concern of mine. But I hear they're fantastic and they're looking to try them out. And NCTD has been really proactive about having different discussions. So, you might see those in the future going up and down the low-sand corridor. Other than that, I hope everybody has a great time. Happy Halloween and see you next time.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Looking forward to all those events and hope everybody has a safe and happy and healthy Halloween. And I want to report out on one of my appointments. Sandag Borders Committee, we received a really informative presentation from Lithium Valley, which is an initiative in the Sultan Sea to mine lithium from the geothermal brine that they're currently, you know, harvesting for energy. At this time, there is also lithium and other minerals in the brine that could be accessed and be a resource for our region, which would be like globally transformative development. And it's just incredible. We, of course, have an interest in that at Clean Energy Alliance. And so, we're looking to have maybe a larger discussion about that, just continuing to get more information about what's happening in our region. So, thank you so much for the discussion tonight.
Thank you to everybody who came out tonight. Thanks to our great staff and our council and all of our firefighters and scouts. And thank you to my wife, Shauna, for allowing me to serve the community. Thank you for a great night. We'll see you guys soon.